Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to the February 13th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is a sign up sheet if you're speaking this evening. The other is a sign on sheet for attendees of the hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please make sure that you have signed up on one of those sheets. Our meeting this evening is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. And please, anybody and board members also speak up close to the microphone. If you can't hear yourself in the room, that means there's a possibility the recording's not going to pick you up very well. So everybody pull your mics up close, please. You are to direct your statements, questions, and responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. We ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath, and I thank you for your cooperation. Also, if you could silence your cell phones at this time, too. On our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of the January 23rd minutes, we have one public hearing this evening. That's number CSP 22-0234. The owner is Golden Beach Properties LLC for a concept site plan, and the action requested is a review of a concept site plan for a 20,599 square foot supermarket, a 30,000 square foot of buildings for the flea market and for air grounds use relocated from the farmer's market, a 5,200 square foot Chick-fil-A with a drive through, 2,675 square feet of retail space pad sites, and 2,437 square feet for a restaurant pad site. After that, we'll check on any new anything, and then followed by adjournment. This time, I'll let the board members introduce theirself, starting with Mr. Brown.
John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
And Merle Evans.
Okay. Also with us this evening, from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have their Deputy Director Courtney Jenkins, their Administrative Coordinator is Jessica Birch, and we have our Planner, Mr. Larry Everhard, here this evening. Also, Brandy is home this evening.
They can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Amy, can you adjust the volume in the room, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How about now? Can you hear me now? Okay. Okay. Shoot, I'm looking down right now, but if you can't hear us during the hearing, just give me one of those, and I'll make sure we do some adjustments. Brandy's not with us this evening. We hope she feels better. Also, our supporting county staff, we have Buffy Giddens as Deputy County Attorney, our Assistant County Attorney, Mr. John Hauser from the Department of Public Works, we have Donnie Mills from St. Mary's Metropolitan Commission, we have Kristy Hollander, though I don't see her, and Anna Wells. We have Mr. Alec Young from the Tuxton River NAS Community Planning Liaison's Office, Casey Guidry from the Department of Economic Development, and Amy Carter is our video media producer this evening. Did everybody, excuse me, did everybody have a chance to review the January 23rd minutes?
Yes.
Is there any additions or deletions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 23th Planning Commission meeting?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Summers. Okay. We'll do roll call vote. Ms. Robrecht?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Did you say me?
Yes.
Brown, yes.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Fazekas?
Aye.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, thank you. Moving right along, our first case of this evening. I'm going to swear everybody in. If you think you're going to be giving us any statements this evening, go ahead and swear everybody in at the same time. But I will ask you, when you come up to the microphone during that period of the meeting, if you've been sworn in. If you haven't, I'll re swear you in, and if you didn't get on the sheet, I'll make sure that you get up here. Okay, all persons testifying this evening, if you stand now, we'll get you sworn in. Okay. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Courtney, take it away.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commissioners. Agenda item one is a concept site plan, CSP 22-0234 for the Golden Beach Development. The concept site plan seeks approval of a 20,599 square foot supermarket, 30,000 square feet of buildings for the relocated flea market and fairgrounds use, a 5,200 square foot fast food with a drive through, and 2,675 square feet of retail space pad sites, and a 2,437 square foot restaurant pad site. The site is located at 29890 and 29990 and 29940 Three Knots Road in Charlotte Hall. The land use is mixed use moderate intensity, and the zoning is town center mixed use, TMX. The regulations for the town center mixed use district provide opportunities for residential and commercial development within town centers consistent with the comprehensive plan. Standards are intended to create an urban character and make the core area safe, pedestrian friendly, and visually attractive. Per the comprehensive plan, town centers are secondary growth centers located in Charlotte Hall, New Market, Mechanicsville, Hollywood, and Piney Point. They are to be urban in pattern and form, designed for moderately intense residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by the provision of community facilities and services. So use type 50 is for fairgrounds and flea markets. They are establishments engaged in maintaining building or open area in which buildings, parking facilities, and open areas rented or otherwise provided for temporary uses, including public or private shows or events, or for use by various unrelated individuals to sell articles that are either homemade, homegrown, handcrafted, old, obsolete, or antique, and may include selling of goods at retail by businesses or individuals that are generally engaged in retail trade of new or secondhand reclaimed or salvaged goods. Use type 73 for restaurant is an establishment serving unpackaged food and beverages in a ready-to-consume state primarily to persons seated at counters or tables within the building. It may include outside dining and sale of food prepared on site and beverages for consumption off the premises, where alcoholic beverages are sold in conjunction with the sale of food for consumption on the premises, and the sale of said beverages comprises less than 50% of the gross receipts. Use type number 74, which is for restaurant fast food, excuse me, it's an establishment that offers quick eat-in or takeout food service, which is accomplished through a limited menu of items already prepared and held for service or prepared, fried, grilled quickly or heated in a device such as a microwave oven. Orders are not generally taken at the customer's table. Food is not served at the same table or counter where the food is consumed, and the food is generally served in disposable wrapping and containers. Use type number 76 is for retail sales, which is an establishment engaged in low-volume retail sales of goods and merchandise, not specifically listed under another use classification, included but not limited to specialty stores engaged in the retail sale of antiques, appliances, art, art supplies and services, new automotive parts and accessories excluding service and installation, bicycles, cameras, carpeting and floor coverings, coins, electronic equipment, handcrafted items, hardware, hobby materials, jewelry, kitchen utensils, medical supplies, office supplies, paint and wallpaper, photographic supplies, records, sporting goods, toy stores, pawn shops, grocers, liquor stores, or delicatessence. For drive-through services as a secondary use, number 115, which is a facility for providing services to persons remaining in automobiles. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Southern Maryland News on January 27th and February 3rd, 2023. The property has been posted in accordance with the CZO requirement, Section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 1. The agenda was posted on the website on February 1st. The concept site plan was distributed for review by the TEC agencies on September 21st, The use of fairgrounds and flea markets, restaurant, retail sales general, and drive-through services are permitted uses in the town center mixed use zoning district, and the use of restaurant, fast food is permitted as a limited use in the TMX zoning district. For all non-residential and multifamily residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the Planning Director. This is a public hearing, which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the concept site plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by Section 70.2.2, will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, will adequately developed recreation and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance, and is consistent with Chapter 62 design objectives. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2. Nelson Orocho with Bay Engineering is here representing the applicant, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me at this time.
Does anybody have any questions, the staff? Mr. Van Kirk?
Courtney, when you talked about the actions requested of all the supermarket, restaurant, pad sites?
Yes.
Is this hearing just to approve the pad sites and not specifically? I mean, if this is approved?
Right.
And they get a pad site for retail space? There was a lot of different things in the retail space. You know, a coin shop would have a whole lot less people going in and out than a liquor store, which was on there also.
Right.
Would they have to come back with a concept?
No, they would not have to come back for the concept site plan for the retail spaces or for the restaurant. I'm not sure if they have any spaces leased at this time. Maybe the applicant can address that. But we do have the architectural renderings for the retail building.
But we don't know what it is yet.
Correct.
So was that included in the traffic? I really didn't pay a lot of attention to, was that included in the traffic counts? The proposed retail space and the restaurant to pads?
I will let the traffic engineer answer that, but I would assume so. Yes, sir.
Anything else for staff? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sue Greer of the Law Offices of Sue A. Greer on behalf of the applicant, Golden Beach Properties. With me here tonight is Nelson Orocho of Bay Engineering, Jackie Chandler of Traffic Concepts, and Justin Rosemore of Golden Beach Properties LLC. I am pleased to be here with you tonight to present this redevelopment project to the Planning Commission. It is, I know we have some public comment, and we're always anxious to hear from the public. In this case, Mr. Rosemore has been working and listening to the community, and we have in fact made changes to our plans throughout the process based on some of the feedback that we have received. What is exciting about this project is it's really, you know, a combination of the push between old and new. The new is that the project is doing what your comprehensive plan asks it to do. It's taking commercial redevelopment in an area that your comprehensive plan has designated for redevelopment and for growth, and it's doing it on an existing parcel, because that's also what your comprehensive plan says. We want development in this area, and we want you to develop on existing parcels and redevelop those for infill development. I am going to, because, but the old is, is that one of the comments that we've heard, frankly, throughout the process of developing this project relate to the farmer's market or the market that's there. And so what this project does, while it allows the redevelopment of the parcel by relocating and reconfiguring that, it allows the farmer's market to maintain a presence on the property. So that's the old, bringing it together to bring a better product to the Charlotte Hall and St. Mary's County community. Now, I know there are a number of speakers, so I think you probably want to get to it. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Nelson Orocho of Bay Engineering, followed by Jackie Chandler of Traffic Concepts. Mr. Rosemore will be here to answer any questions you have, and then after the public comment, we would of course like the opportunity to sum up. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Orocho.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. My name is Nelson Orocho. I'm with Bay Engineering. I'm a project manager with the firm. And so, you're going to help me along here?
Yeah, just tell me when.
The second slide is the overall site plan of the site. To the far right, which is to the east, and the northeast is where the farmer's market would be relocated to, top right of that sheet. To the west, which is adjoining a Three Knots Road, Route 5, is the Chick-fil-A pad site to, right there. Just south of that is the retail building, and then to the east of that is the grocery store site. There is a, configuration wise, there, do this, apologize. Configuration wise, there is a center private drive or a kind of a spine road that goes north-south between the Chick-fil-A and the grocery store and goes down to the retail pad and allows for circulation. There is a sidewalk that runs along that spine or central drive to the east side, which connects all three pad sites internally. The existing site, if we can go, thank you, perfect. If you see there on the existing site, we have, we call it the Loop Road. It's, I think formerly known as MDSHA 855A. It's the access road that runs parallel to Three Knots, Route 5, and it comes into Travel Lane. That road is proposed, and you can see it there. It's colored, it's hard to see, but if you could flip back, please, to the site plan to the first second. You can see there's a cul-de-sac bulb there up towards Travel Lane, so that will be terminated. The intent is that will be terminated. People would come traveling north, get onto the access, the old Loop Road, then they would come into the, initially either to the, to the south, to the retail pad site, then to the north, they would come into the Chick-fil-A site. But then the road is terminated with the cul-de-sac that you can see there. If you move the cursor to the arrow to the west or left, right there is where the cul-de-sac is. So people will, coming up the north, traveling, would come to an island, a concrete island that would cause them to turn into the site, and that intersection there would have a light. So it would be a full movement, and Jackie will speak more about that. Excuse me. The site currently is developed, it's buildings and a lot of gravel, stone for parking. And if you go to the color, please, you could see that, the buildings there and the structures that are there, excuse me, the structures that are there that are existing, and then everything you see in a light yellow tan tint, that is all stone impervious area. So that's sort of the backdrop as far as existing, some of the physical features that are changing there. Probably if we can go to the color rendering, it probably, these are slides, just to talk through the slides. We have just a view, a street view of the farmer's market. There's two of those. You can see one's to the south, one's for, this one's a little more to the north with the structures there. And then we have the detailed layout of what's currently proposed for the farmer market area. Then the next, this is the information for our site. Again, because the site is impervious, the stormwater management is done through redevelopment for environmental site design to the maximum extent practicable, practicable, excuse me. And so this has been met on site because of the redevelopment opportunity that's there. There's no stormwater management existing at all. So we're going from zero to, I think, over 15,000 cubic feet of storage of ESD for the site. This is the zoom in for the Chick-fil-A site. The Chick-fil-A site entrance there, again, is off the Loop Road. There are, it's showing the two lanes with cars stacked. There is an additional option for a third lane for more vehicles. The parking is to the north of the building, and we have ample parking for the site. Next slide. And that's just the background information with regard to the site. We can go to the next slide. This is the grocery store. It's fronts, or the front of the store is obviously, to the west, the loading area for trucks and delivery is to the east or to the right, and then entry for the site would be through the, again, through the spine or that central drive road to get patrons into the site for grocery shopping. Basic background information again. And then this is the retail site, which again is just, as was mentioned by the board, it's retail. There's, Justin Rosemore can speak more specifically about if he has some leases there. The site is parked amply for general retail at the moment, and that's what we have it shown as. Again, stormwater management is provided on all sites. Okay. And then, this is really what I wanted to get to, because this really shows a big difference, I think, with respect to what the site is currently and what it's going to be. You can see there we provided the required buffer, 65 feet from the right away to the pavement, and there'll be landscaping along the entire frontage there internally, the landscaping both along Travel Lane and even around the Chick-fil-A and even between those and the retail site. So it's, as far as green, it's much improved with the green that's just lawn trees landscaping plus the stormwater management area that's provided. It's quite much, much better from that standpoint. And then this is showing the potential there for the farmer's market relocation and shows some configurations and what's there. And Justin can speak some, too, about what he sees for this in the future, if there's any questions about that. But this is what we have as far as taking the structures that were existing, existing, and then moving them to this new location. I guess I'll stop and leave it for questions from the board.
Mr. Orocho?
Orocho, yeah, yeah.
So I got a couple of questions. The first, I can't put my head around it. So we have the local parallel access road, and right now the people can turn onto what's listed as Travel Lane.
Travel Lane, yes, sir.
And we're determining that, obviously, because we don't want the various traffic.
Complex.
Yeah, exactly. So you put a traffic circle, a cul-de-sac there?
Cul-de-sac, yes.
So what would be the purpose? I'm just really confused about the purpose of the cul-de-sac. If somebody's getting off onto the access road, they obviously want to go to run the businesses. So I don't see why the access road wouldn't just stop at the Chick-fil-A driveway. Could you explain that to me?
We showed it purely for emergency vehicles or turnaround area at the end. If somebody, the issue is if somebody comes in and they'd want to come back down to one of the places they passed, like the retail place, they can turn around and come. It's still two-way, right? It's not a one-way, so they can get to the cul-de-sac and turn around and come back down to at least the shops there, they have to.
Could you use a pointer and so that everybody can see what you're talking about in the discussion as you're elaborating?
So is that something that the county's requiring?
So the...
For emergency vehicles?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, it was just an internal thing, just to allow for movement. The, how you want to say, the nuance is that that road is state highway owned. So we would negotiate that with state highways. It's not a county, right? It's a state highway right of way. So they've, they're allowing us to do this. This has been proposed to them, and they're okay with it. And if the county or the board would have some other suggestions, we would have to go back to S.H.A. and say, look, you know, maybe the cul-de-sac bulb is lessened or the impervious area is reduced, but that would be something that we'd have to go back to S.H.A., and I can't speak for them. This is what's been shown. So if this needs to differ or be revised, that's something that we would have to go back to them. If that's a...
That was the one part I didn't catch. It's actually S.H.A. who owns the property, so.
Yeah.
The second question pertains to the lanes on the Chick-fil-A. Have you ever gone to the Chick-fil-A or driven past the one in front of the Giant supermarket in California? And have you ever seen how the traffic goes out into the access road on the property there? And as a customer at Giant, it's hard for me to get out because cars are queuing 10, 12 sometimes, if it's, you know, close to lunch or dinner time, onto that, off the Chick-fil-A property. So what is, what is being done in this design to address? Because most Chick-fil-A's, you see, they have this popularity problem.
Yes, that's a good, a good question.
It's a good problem to have, I guess.
Yeah, it's good for Chick-fil-A. So there is a queuing analysis that's in the end of your package that was provided, and in that analysis, they took the one that's in Leonard, right? And they looked at that, and that was maxed at 22 vehicles for what they were doing there. This has a potential of 50 vehicles. So they have considered that issue.
Okay.
And they've provided for that, that condition as far as the stacking and the queuing for vehicles and people are there, so.
Okay, then just to follow up on that, the, so I'm a little confused just by the way the drawing's done, because it comes in and it shows the two lanes and the optional third lane, as you mentioned.
Correct. Correct.
But then as you turn around the, uh, far corner of the building, that lane just kind of disappears into the landscape. So could you explain that to me?
They, at the Chick-fil-A's, right, when the, the greeters or the people, the, the, are coming out and, uh, and navigating those, uh, they, oh, they taper down, you know, and a lot of the two.
Okay.
Yeah, they, and, and they, I don't know how they do, it's not magic, but they, they talk to each other. Um, you know, they'll say, you're behind the, uh, the Chevy pickup truck and you're behind the Ford vehicle or.
That's a standard practice.
It's, it's standard practice and then, and they're, they're literally, um, guiding you to make sure that you're in the, you're the proper person to pay, you know, the right bill, uh, and pick up the right stuff, so.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I have for you right now. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything at this point?
I do. So just to piggyback off of Mr. Fazekis' question, I'm, I'm just looking for a little bit more additional clarification. So in the Chick-fil-A drive-through, if you have backup, the backup potentially be on the Loop Road?
No, no, the, the, they would, um, they would navigate the people to stay in the parking area. So you see that parking aisle to the, uh, to the north, if you move your cursor to the left, yeah, right. So, so they would, they would basically have the people, if they needed to, coming through the parking, stacking and not, try not to stack or queue out into the, into the roadway. So that would be internal, they would, they would do that. But there, again, there's 50, it's 50 vehicles. Uh, I don't, I don't know if I've seen one with, um, say, I haven't been to one that's 50 vehicles, but that's quite a few vehicles that they're allowing for as far as a condition there, so.
But people could actually pull into the Chick-fil-A from the Loop Road, correct? Or no?
Oh, yeah. Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
So if they're pulling in from the Loop Road and they make that immediate right into the fast food lane.
Yes.
There is the potential that the Loop Road could get congested.
So they would have, they still would have someone directing. So if they were in a busy time, I don't, whatever that busy time is, it seems like they're always busy, so I don't know. I don't know, I won't pick a time. But when they are busy, uh, and they need to, they will have someone to basically tell the people to continue through and they will, they will direct the people to basically stack and get them out of that condition. That is my understanding.
Cause it really doesn't work that way in California.
It's not done in California.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a nightmare. And if you're gonna weave these people through the parking lot, that's even more of a hazard, I would think.
I would just think other people would get in front of me. I'm now ready to go online.
Yeah, exactly.
Now I'm gonna go loop around and either the car is gonna jump in front of me.
That's.
So I think the human, the human aspect of that's gonna be hard to, uh, to fight as, in terms of traffic control. I don't know how you would handle that.
Yeah.
It seems like that driveway there is just lending the businesses, uh, patrons to be queuing on a public access road.
So I think that's why Chick-fil-A has added this option for the third lane, which you don't typically see.
Right.
And if you see that they've doubled their ability, that typically they make provisions, I think, what did you say, Mr. Orocho?
Twenty-two, what the study's showing, yeah.
Twenty-two. And this is how many?
Uh, this would stack 50 with the third lane.
So it's more than double. So it sounds to me like they're responding to the fact that they know that they are popular and that this is an issue and they're trying to make provisions for it at this location.
And I, and I didn't clarify that it's 38 with the two lanes. So it's 20, so it's 22, without the third lane, it's 38. Add the third lane, it gets to 50. So 22 is what the study's showing that seems like what they would need. They said, okay, we're gonna show 38 here. Uh, and they have the provision for the third lane, which would get them to 50. So that's why, you know, they're, in their minds and their research and what they do as far as that they feel that. And obviously Chick-fil-A is not interested in causing conflicts, right? And, you know, it doesn't help them if they, it wouldn't help them, so.
I, I think, I think that the dialogue has to change from the option of a third lane to that, that's gonna have the third lane, just because we already have problems with this chain of business in the county. And, uh, the fact that in that case, it's a private road on the development and this is, as you mentioned, is a state public access road, um, you know, just thinking about emergency services and such. I think that would really, really, um, you know, cause some safety concerns. So I definitely think that instead of just as an option, I think that should definitely be part of the proposed plan. That would just make me feel a little more comfortable.
Following on that line, can I ask the question?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, you compare it to what I called the, the terribly planned Chick-fil-A, meaning the one in California, because it's been an add-on as we have done it over the years. As it relates to the Waldorf, did you ever go up and compare it to what the Waldorf turn is, where they have the circle arrangement like this? What it, what, what were their numbers? Or do you even, did you even do that?
Um, the, uh, the study for the queuing was provided by, uh, by Chick-fil-A and their, uh, their consultants, so I don't have that information.
So they only provided you data related to the California one?
That's correct, sir.
Even though, even though it's a different county, there is a design similar to this up the road in Walmart, in that area of Waldorf. So be aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
Is my understanding that the Laurel Chick-fil-A provided information as well?
Yes, they did.
They, yeah, they used, they took the Laurel and then used that as a base, then did the analysis of the, um, the one in, in county and then, and then extrapolated what they needed there. And then, and then they took that and said, all right, these are similar stores or, and so on and so.
May I ask a little, hold on, sorry, go ahead, Penn.
Back, I mean, same issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking to Mike Family.
Is there any way that that, that you can enter that Chick-fil-A without any risk to backup, to the ongoing traffic on either side, on either road? Is there any other configuration that would not, that would mitigate the risk of a backup if there's greater than? I mean, I'm not, I even think with 50, there's always that, I mean, the risk is still there that people, I mean, you're gonna have a backup.
Well, I think.
Somebody's to fall asleep and hold up the whole thing.
Talking about me.
Yeah, waiting for your food.
Yeah. I, I, I think the, the logistics, right? And when they do these, they have these, I'll say young people, cause I'm, I'm an old man, so they're much younger, but they, they'll, they'll come out and they usually are directing people again with the lanes and stuff. And also they, they, uh, you can manage the vehicles with respect to directing them when they're closer versus farther away. So if they're coming in, if they have someone stationed at the entrance and they know that they've queued, let's say, the example is they've queued 50 people, right? And they, they know that and they're busy period. They can direct those people immediately as they come in and get them out of there so they don't have a stacking and get them out. Uh, the, the ability for them to then negotiate the people and get them away from there is, is, would be, let's say, a better scenario than having them being conflicted right there or trying to put additional stacking, get them out in a way and stack them, uh, you know, around. It, it seems logical, but.
I just, well, my question really was, is there any way, any other configuration that could mitigate that risk?
We haven't evaluated that.
I also noticed, um, two things. The cul-de-sac you said that you have there, that's an unmarked, uh, lane right now. And if you have people, I'll say, that go by the Chick-fil-A entrance and go down to that cul-de-sac and then circle back around. I presume that they went by for one or two reasons. They didn't know where they were at, which they should know where they're at if they live around there. Or two, they couldn't get in the entryway to Chick-fil-A. So then they're going all the way back down, heading south in that lane and popping back out onto 235 or Route 5.
Yeah.
That could be hazardous in itself, cause even though that is a count, a state-owned, it's, it's kinda tight right in there. Uh, it would have to be relined and all that type of, uh, work to be done on that part of the project. And also where you turn off of Route 5 and go on, I believe that's called Traveler Lane, you have an entry into Chick-fil-A right there at the head. Um, now you were saying if things get bad on that side entrance, you're gonna direct traffic to that parking lot. Well, suppose you have people pulling into that parking lot because they can't get into that line and you have people entering off of that lane that are coming in there, they're, they're slowing down from a, from a 50-degree mile an hour speed coming into that lane. So they're gonna be, I won't say hot, but they're gonna be coming in at a, at a, well, faster rate of speed when they come in there, cause they're hungry and they wanna get into Chick-fil-A as quick as they can. I have the feeling that you're gonna have a problem right there, having that entrance so close to 235. You have an entrance that's on the new, um, lane that's right there, the access lane. If it would be diverted to that, so you could be, make that a bigger entrance on the side so that they could get in there, alleviating the, the problem that if, um, as I said, if you've got people coming, turning into that north end of that lot, you already have, the queue is full, they're putting them in the parking lot, it's gonna be a, a cluster right in there, I think. I can let somebody else, uh, address that or you can address that, but that's just something that, that I'm thinking about. You got a lot of things coming right into that one little spot all at one time and they're not gonna be patient with it, you know?
Howard, I didn't even see that until you mentioned it, but if I'm going north on five and, uh, I say, oh, Chick-fil-A, and I, I make that really quick turn, I am coming hot around that current corner.
Yeah.
And if there's cars queuing out onto Traveler Lane.
Yeah.
You know, that's just a recipe for.
On a butt head.
Bed accident.
No, I know it's a 50, 50-car stack-up, but I think they've practically had 50 cars in California. Of course, it's only two lanes going into the California store, so that's, that's striking one against them. Your, your, your three-lane, um, path around there will, will help. That three-lane path leads into two, if I'm not mistaken, when it comes time for pickup, what it kinda shows on, on this map here. So, um, you got a lot, a lot of stuff going on in that little bit of lot.
Yeah, I had a follow-up, some comments to that. How many spots do they have for ordering? One lane, two lanes, three lanes?
They're, they're ordering in three, what, the setup is that they would be able to order in three lanes.
So they can order in three and then it narrows down to two when they pick up?
Coming down to two, yes, sir.
Okay. So from, I can't read it anymore, I had looked at it on the, on the plan before, but what's the total distance of the two, not counting the third, space-wise? I know you said for 50 cars, that would require like, like a thousand feet. Doesn't, doesn't queuing take in like 24 feet or 20 feet a car or on average?
I apologize.
Just wanna know how long them two lanes are. And then the third one is not as long because they gotta merge into.
Right.
Into the other lane.
The third one, the third lane is about 14 vehicles, uh, as far as stacking for the third one, so, um, if you give me a second, I'll.
Sure. Because I, I read the report from Chick-fil-A and like I said, I can't, I couldn't, somebody else mentioned, I can't for the life of me see why they would exclude using Waldorf, which is a highly populated area. And I'm not saying Laurel's not populated and, uh, but it said there's an average of 12 to 22 vehicles at Chick-fil-A in California. I mean, that's true some of the time, but I tell you, most of the time I pass right by there and won't even pull into the, into the place from 10:30 till 7 o'clock at night.
You park in the Walmart parking lot.
Well, you have to park in Target. I see many person park in Target.
And walk across the lot and walk across.
Because you can't even get into the lane if you want it to eat there. So I just wanna make sure that this is not gonna create some of the, and that stuff about having somebody out there directing traffic, um, I'm, I'm, I've seen it down there at Chick-fil-A, up at the building, they're telling people to get in two lanes and sometimes somebody would be taking an order, but they're never out there by the road.
Yeah.
And I can't blame them.
Tom Porgue.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, also the, the California Chick-fil-A, the queuing is ending up on the property, not where people are gonna be 25 miles an hour, not 55 miles an hour on Route 5. And I, I think, I think that.
Well, they're not gonna queue on Route 5, they're gonna queue on the Loop Road, right?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna turn, if they're gonna northbound, they're gonna be turning and then, yeah, but that, that, that.
Oh, you're up there. You're talking about up there.
Right there, yeah, where the mouse is.
The only problem that's gonna cause is.
Where cars stops.
That north entrance off of Travel Lane and then the one off of Loop Road, you're gonna have people waiting in Loop Road and people coming in the north from Travel Lane.
And blocking.
You'll have an all-out war, trying to say, well, I was next to get into the queuing lane.
And that'll block the part, all that parking.
Yeah, it's a, I don't, I don't know about that specific design. Go ahead.
Bad location.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, apologize. So distance, so from the, the order window, right, where all three lanes would be.
Okay.
That's middle of the building, just to the south. From that point, coming around the outer lane, the third lane.
Going back toward Travel Lane.
Yeah, yeah, so it's two, the inner lane is obviously tighter, so it's less distance, about 210 feet. The outer lane is about 250 feet, 240. So those are the lengths there. The middle one's probably the average, 225, you know, so 246, 500 feet of lane width or lane length there approximately.
But, okay, if you got 500 feet of, of lane, how do we get 50 cars out of that? I'm, I'm pretty sure I've seen a lot of reports of queuing on roads.
There's.
I mean, a car's no shorter in a parking lot than it is on the road, so it, I don't see how it's 50 cars.
Well, the, the, the cars are also counted coming through to the pickup window. So there's the additional ones from the, from that point to the pickup window.
So all the way around.
Yes, yes, sir.
But they're gonna be having to stop at 200 feet instead of all the way around at the pickup windows. There's gonna be some kind of a slight delay sometimes.
To order.
Just to order, because, you know, drive-in windows and not just picking on Chick-fil-A, a lot of times the food isn't ready, so you gotta sit at the window, you know, for a minute or two, which is a long time when you've got cars steadily coming.
There's approximately 40 to 42 vehicles from the order window to the end that are, that are, that are there. So there's still quite a bit of stacking from, from just the windows, the order windows to the end. So there's approximately 40 vehicles.
No, I don't see that, but that's.
Mr. Avich, you have something?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, California is California because there's no place to go. I mean, they're, they're in a development and I don't think Chick-fil-A in the time when it was constructed really considered how busy it was going to be and they really have, been gonna rock in a hard spot. But I've noticed since, I guess, the last couple of years with, with more people using drive-ins, what I've noticed is that the, when they, when they mitigate for traffic, they don't do it as traffic moves into the, into the parcel, they mitigate it as it comes out. And what happens is that those folks that, that Joe was talking about with regard to making the order and moving forward, if those orders aren't complete, they're using runners. And what they do is that they get the folks to clear the lanes beyond the pickup lane and they have them park in designated areas and it says, um, drive-in parking. And that's, and that's what it's used for. So moving, so you would have, moving in, um, the idea of having somebody, I'm sorry, the other way, make a left, off of, off of the Loop Road, moving into the, into the, into the loop to make an order. So to have somebody out there would be crazy. I mean, that would just be not, not a good thing for anybody. But if you, as long as you could keep the lanes fairly clear by moving the traffic through and having the traffic come out the other end. Right, exactly. And if those orders weren't complete, they would simply go across and park and then what's, what most places are using now, Chick-fil-A and other places is doing it. I see, um, McDonald's is doing it. Uh, you'll see more and more of these, these areas where they can't, they, I guess they get backed up or it's a large order or whatever. And so the way to mitigate that is to keep people moving through those lanes at the, at the, at the exit and not trying to mitigate it at the, at the entrance.
Right.
And I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but, um, having an, putting, putting some, uh, so, uh, an, an opportunity for people to park for that short amount of time, that they're gonna have to wait for their orders for these runners to come out. Um, and not that I wanna be a runner or anybody else, but that's the only way that this is going to work. And it's the only way it's gonna work probably in California, is to, is to have runners. And I don't know where they're gonna park them. Maybe they would, it's not feasible to park them across the road at Target, cause you gotta cross, you gotta cross the road. It, it almost has to be on that, on that side of the road. And I haven't been by there lately and I haven't been to Laurel either, so.
There's a lot of, uh, there's a few, uh, Chick-fil-A stores that do that.
Yeah.
There, um, there's one in Annapolis, it's very busy in Edgewater, they do that. There's the one, the newest. There's the one, the newest one in Calver, they do the same thing. They have, I think the front row and maybe one row in, they cone it off so that people can just, and they direct people to wait there as they bring their orders out.
This is not new. There's a new redevelopment in Patuxent, was it, is it old San Sushi? They just built Slim Chickens. Slim Chickens has the same issue. They have people that are all out, all the way around the corner, blocking access to a lot of the other restaurants there. And they're using cones and all kinds of stuff. It's just, you know, this isn't built yet, so the time to fix this or do something with it is now, you know. And I'm just saying that mitigating people coming in is not the way to do it. Mitigating getting people out of those lanes and across into the, in some sort of a lane or a parking area for those people that have placed their orders and they're waiting is a much, much better idea. But it comes down to really putting 10 pounds of mud to a 5-pound sack, so.
Chairman, I've got a question as it relates really, it looks like everything is designed around, shall we say, the drive-through traffic. And I don't see if people are either at Aldi's or they're over there at the other retail areas. How do they access going over to Chick-fil-A? Is there any, where are the walkways? Is there any sidewalks, anything to get people over there? And please show by pointer how they do that from either of those two locations.
So there's a sidewalk that goes from the south, if you, on the south, right on the east side of the road or east side of that central, right, there's a sidewalk that continues all the way up through, goes all the way up, keeps going and keeps going all the way to the north and ends right at that entrance point. And then there is a crosswalk that is right across the concrete access area for the Chick-fil-A. And then there is another crosswalk down to the south for the retail area for those to come from that area to pick up to that sidewalk and then be able to get, excuse me, to be able to get to and travel between the three pad sites.
But isn't your crosswalk that goes from Aldi to Chick-fil-A comes right out into the, I'll say the, where they're leaving, they've picked up their order already, isn't that kind of dangerous to have it right there? I mean, I've got my order of chicken, I'm getting, I'm hitting the road, buddy. So, you know, if somebody's walking across there, that could, that could really be a problem there. Plus then you're also telling me that there's going to be people parking over at Aldi's, walking over to Chick-fil-A to get a sandwich, you know, hell, I'm not going to mess with that lot, I'm going to park next door at the Aldi store and walk over and get a chicken sandwich if I'm hearing right what you just said. So that's going to cause a problem both for Aldi, reducing their number of parking spots and it's going to have a little problem there coming across that crosswalk into a lot that's where all the, the three lanes of traffic have gone down to two, they're getting an order and they're pulling out of there hard and fast. So I see that as a problem.
We can evaluate that with the Chick-fil-A people as far as the location of that crosswalk and what options we have.
It almost looks to me like it would have been better to have Aldi close to Route 5.
Exactly.
Have the Chick-fil-A on the inside and one that would give you, when people turn on to the, what's the lane at the top? I can't think of what.
Travel.
Travel lane. That would give them more distance to come down to whip in. I think people are going to whip in the Chick-fil-A harder than they're going to whip in the Aldis. I mean, I've seen our Aldis down here in the county and it stays pretty busy, but it's not quite out of control like the Chick-fil-A is going to be. That's just my observation.
And is the, the buffers you're showing there, it's not a hedge like you have down in California. Is it just trees and a few plants you dodge so that if you walk across, otherwise, do you have a path that goes across there?
Yeah, there's, there will be a concrete, a concrete walk there, yes.
Because I mean, you know, I'm one of those people that parks in the Target parking lot, I can go through the hedge, place my order, get it and come back and beat the cars that were ahead of me. So, I mean, it's, people are going to look for the least amount of time. So the issues of people parking in Aldi's or down in the other retail area is going to be, possibly present itself.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, has this been looked at, different configurations of this plan been developed or looked at, or was this like the first run and this is what we came up with? Because I really feel like there, and obviously I'm not an expert, but it would seem to me that there would be a different configuration that might be safer than this plan that we have in front of us right now.
The site layout as far as configuration within the Chick-fil-A and that, that's provided by the restaurant, by Chick-fil-A as far as what they would prefer as to layout and their store size and the parking and then similar to Aldi, you know, they would have, they would present each one what they would want based on how it's sort of laying out. I mean, the retail to the south is more driven by the, by Justin Rosemore as far as saying, I'm going to develop this and have a layout there and it's not driven, let's say, by either one in the sense of what their outside direction and requirements. So, and they have their requirements, I'm sorry, they have their requirements as far as circulation and movements for vehicles and drop-offs and delivery, so they have a lot of things that they want to meet because, you know, some of this stuff too is truck, you know, getting vehicles and sometimes, you know, it's like, but then if you put the trucks in conflict with the, with people, then there's an issue there, like for Aldi, you know, they load to the back, so they want the trucks going to the back, coming in back again and getting out the road and then getting out of there. So there's, there are things that are thought through, that are considered, that are tried to make it mesh together the best they can. So we didn't, we don't try to throw these things, you know, we're not throwing darts on a dartboard, we try not to do that.
Let me ask you a quick, let me ask you a quick question because I was thinking the same thing, but I wasn't thinking of configuration of the parking lots and stuff like that. I was thinking of, was any consideration giving to Aldi being by the road and Chick-fil-A being.
That's what I was saying.
That's what I thought.
Exactly.
Internal, I'm just saying, was that a, any concern or does Chick-fil-A, like a lot of stores, require roadfront or want roadfront?
That's, that's something that is beyond.
We can ask the developer.
Developer would.
That when we get to, okay, I just was curious because plenty of concerns, like I think Mr. Thompson, Ms. Vazika said, cars coming off of 5, going north, turning on the Traveler Lane and coming right into, into the Chick-fil-A, which could cause some queuing, which would stop the cars that's coming southbound 5 into turning into Traveler Lane. If you either didn't have that northern entrance into Chick-fil-A or had them using the private access lane in between Aldi and Chick-fil-A, it looks to me like it would cause, it would cause less, less of a problem also. Is that, does private lane also have an in-out for Chick-fil-A right there?
Yeah.
Hard to tell.
Yeah, right there where the cursor.
Okay, so that is also an in-out also of.
Yeah. Yeah. Aldi, Aldi has two, they have one to the north, the cursor is, and then they have the one to the south, so they have two points. The Chick-fil-A has a two-way coming from, again, from the SHA Loop Road and then they have the internal connection and then they have the entrance to the north that comes, coming in. And then the retail has three access points, two south, one in front, in the back, and then one to the, just the north of it there.
So is the Traveler Lane entrance into Chick-fil-A a right turn in only or can they go out that way also?
It's just a right in, sir.
So they can't leave that way?
Correct.
Okay.
I hope not.
Well, that's what I was, I was hoping that that would mitigate a little bit of the problem.
And Aldi also has another entrance off Traveler Lane, don't they? They have one right there with arrows.
Yeah, that's what I was explaining where the truck, most likely, you know, vehicles are coming in to do the loading on the rear of the store there, sir.
Where and when does Chick-fil-A get their deliveries?
I'm sorry, I do not know that.
Okay. Because before we all this queuing and stuff, I can't, I can't imagine if they, a truck showed up late and the drive-through was open. I don't see any loading zone on the, on the design.
In the retail area, where do you propose the entrances to those things to be, on the west, north or east?
I think if you, we look at the architectural elevations, it'll show that the entrances are to the west or that the main.
They're all along the west, all along that west side.
The storefront.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But, so there's the, thank you.
So in essence, the parking on the back means they walk all the way around the building. Okay.
Is there a reason that there's not an entrance into the Aldi parking lot from the Traveler Lane when there is one for Chick-fil-A?
You mean off of Traveler Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you instantly, as you're coming down, you're turning, if you're traveling south and you, there's a light there and you turn in, you're going now east on Traveler Lane, you would come in that spine room and then come right into the store right there and come in where the cursor is. And then you have another entrance down to the south, so the.
I'm talking north.
They'll come right there where the cursor is, right in there.
Yeah, but if you look at the Chick-fil-A parking lot, there's one in that, yes, but Aldi doesn't have one there.
That's correct.
Why not?
They didn't, it was not presented as an option that they wanted, we don't have it on there.
It would seem that that would help with the traffic that might be on the, what is that, private, I can't read it, private access? No? Just a thought.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know, I don't know the, I mean, Jackie Chandler may talk better or more about the traffic splits as far as like what's traveling more from what direction. But once they get on Traveler Lane, that distance there, and they get into the site for the grocery store, again, it's, I don't want to say less hectic, you know, the people are coming in, they can move, you know, through a little smoother, get to where they need to go as a destination, so.
I think a lot of the traffic concerns would be eliminated if we just didn't have that turnout right so close to Route 5. I think that's a lot of, that is a lot of our concerns right there. And just knowing the way this business operates and the popularity of their sandwiches and the customers who will queue and wait in line for a half an hour for a sandwich, you know. Yeah, just, it seems inconsistent. It'd be much safer just to close that off, I think, and then have all the people come down private access lane. That would solve, I think, most of, most of the safety concerns.
Or switch them.
Or switch them, yeah. But I mean, that's a lot more to ask than just to close up an entrance.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the, I didn't mention before, that the site for Chick-fil-A, this is a prototype for them, so they're actually, it's new. So again, this is a new prototype and it's got a larger kitchen, footprint is that, but it's actually, it was done to help with the processing and getting things through quicker. So the kitchen is actually larger, so people have more space because of, you know, concerns. And then there's more ability for them to work in a space in the kitchen and flow a little better so things can move out quicker to the customer and then get out. So that's one of the things Chick-fil-A realizes and they're working on, and this is actually one of the prototypes here, this site, to try to get things to flow, excuse me, flow out to the customer a little, little better.
I think that was a good point to bring out because I think since COVID, a lot of these restaurants are reconsidering their designs. Just north of this, north of this, we approved a Chipotle and the, what we heard at that meeting was that they were decreasing the size of their dining rooms and they were making drive-throughs, which wasn't something they had before because there was a lot of to-go orders and stuff like that. So the footprint of that, when you look at it on Ariel compared to the other McDonald's and Burger King nearby, it's like half the size, but it just, you know, flowing the stuff through more quickly, so.
And your dining area that you're going to have in this, and I presume they're going to have dining, you know, sit-down dining inside.
They'll still have internal sit-down, yes, sir.
Compared to the one in California, how much, is this one bigger in dining room size or smaller or about the same? They appear to be right about the same sized buildings. So when you say they're going to have a much larger kitchen, who's going to suffer? The people that go in and sit down or, I'm just asking, are the seating areas comparable?
Well, I'm not certain about that, so I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Well, the California one has a play area also, I think, where this one, I don't know if it has it or not, you know, where the kids used to play before COVID.
I don't know if they did away with that or not.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
I know their seating is limited, okay. We did our homework this evening, Mr. Roachow. Okay. Is there anything else for this small part of this here?
At this point.
And I will remind everybody tonight, we won't go past 10 o'clock. It doesn't, no matter what's happening, unless it's, I mean, unless we're like this close to making a motion, we're going to shut down at 10 o'clock, okay? Okay, just wanted to remind, that's standard practice for this board.
And I remiss also that this is not going to go through subdivision process, that it's going to be a boundary lot adjustment plat because we're not creating any additional lots. So the same amount of parcels, I should not lots, parcels that we have will remain, there's four existing, there'll be four when this is reconfigured as far as property lines, so there's no additional lots here.
Okay, sir. What's next?
So with that, we'll have Jackie Chandler from Traffic Concepts.
Good evening, Ms. Chandler, how are you this evening?
Good to see you.
The seats are really hot, in case you weren't.
Good evening, for the record, Jackie Chandler with Traffic Concepts. I'll try to go through this quickly, I know you guys probably have a lot of questions, but we did prepare a traffic impact study, so the off-site intersections, we didn't look at the internal circulation patterns that you guys have been talking about, we have not looked at that. Off-site intersections, we looked at Maryland 5 at Golden Beach, Maryland 5 at Traveler Lane, which is the main access into the site, and Maryland 5, Maryland 6. Our counts were done in December of 2021 and February of 2022, depending on the intersection. We did add a COVID factor. It's rare for us to do that now because the state highway has said, you know, our traffic volumes are, this is our new normal. A lot of people, a lot of businesses have figured out that teleworking works, so they're still, the volumes are a bit lower than they were in 2019, but we did take that step to up these just to be conservative, so the volumes were upped for COVID factor. Then we added in a growth factor for two years, the expected build-out of the site. We added in background developments in the area. We have, just to name the big ones, Charlotte Hall Station, which is the old, was planned for a Safeway many years ago, still on the books but hasn't started yet, so we have volumes in here for that. We had volumes in here for the proposed Royal Farms and Starbucks and as well, we have Charlotte Hall Commons, which is the project to the south that's by the veterinary, I mean, the Veterans Clinic. And the, so the future conditions we added in, I know, Mr. Van Kirk, you questioned about the retail pad site, that is included in our future conditions. It's because we don't know the user, we use the standard St. Mary's County retail rates. It's because we don't know the user, we use the standard St. Mary's County retail rates for that building. We included the Aldi as a grocery store, and we included the Chick-fil-A. And what we did for the Chick-fil-A, because the manuals that we use just have standard fast food, and the state highway administration has decided, as we all know, that Chick-fil-A is much busier than a standard fast food. So the state highway administration actually came up with trip generation rates, they counted some other Chick-fil-A's, and they came up with their own rates. This study includes those rates, they are a bit higher than a standard fast food. The results of the study, we had a failure at Maryland 5 at Golden Beach, we had a failure at Maryland 5 at Travel Lane. Maryland 5 at Maryland 6 was an acceptable C-level of service. So I'll get to Maryland 5 at 6 later. Maryland 5 at Golden Beach is a D-level of service, which is not acceptable in this part of the county, it needs to be a C or better. It's an acceptable level to the state, but it's not acceptable in county APF, so up on the screen is improvement number one. And this developer is offering to remark Golden Beach Road heading eastbound. Currently, it's a dedicated left-turn lane and then a shared through-right-turn lane. So we're proposing to modify that. I think this is a little bit similar to the other site up the street, we're going to give a dedicated right-turn lane, and we're going to share the thrus and the lefts. That overmitigates the impact of this development, and it does a few things, it's, it's still going to be a D-level of service, but we're making it better than what it is today. It also will improve the queuing a bit for the southbound left-turn lane. We know that that's an issue, this project does not add trips to that. I have an ultimate fix for that, I just need to wait for the corner to redevelop and get a double left there, but we, there's no right of way to do that today. So this improvement will overmitigate for this project at that intersection. The next slide is, go ahead.
Let's talk about each mitigation intersection as you go through, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm, that's perfect.
Could we go back?
Yes.
I mean, what you're doing there is, I think, a positive thing, but coming eastbound off of that road, it probably has 100 cars a day. So you now don't know what you're mitigating because the other side of the intersection, nothing's happening. And I'm not saying that your development is causing more on that, but it's certainly going to cause something, and you're not doing anything on that side of the road of Route 5 on Golden Beach Road, which is what's needed.
Correct, but remember that by restriping on the eastbound side, I can get the vehicles through the intersection quicker because you're going to be able to make a right on red, so you're not going to get stopped. So by, I can take time away from that for the signal and give it to the other side. This is not a huge fix, I'll admit that, it's not a huge fix to the intersection, but it does overmitigate the impact of this development.
I don't know if I agree with that. It looks to me like the developer, I think the developer owns all the property to the south of Golden Beach Road, over there where Fred's Liquor is. It's to me like if they put another lane or something in there, now you're talking about real mitigation that would really help with, with whatever happens in there. I mean, you're taking Travel Lane, and not that you, but I'm saying, they're taking Travel Lane and making that, in my opinion, really nice, five lanes, it's great. And they don't have anywhere near the traffic on Travel Lane that Golden Beach Road has, and what do they have, three lanes? So I don't, I don't quite understand where the trade-off is for, yes, Travel Lane's going to be, I really think, nice, you know, with what they're proposing there. But it looks like Golden Beach Road, the mitigation on the other side by the old Fitzgerald's Realty, like I said, you get 100 cars a day that come out of there, it's not, I don't see what that's doing for, for over here, which could get some traffic from Aldi and Chick-fil-A that come up the back and, and back out into all that. Just don't see how that's mitigating because you're still going by the preface that state highway has to agree to the restriping, which would make sense, they agree to the restriping, but then they'd have to change the signal times. They have to approve that also, so it's all hindrance upon, are they going to do all this?
Right.
You know, the changing, changing signal times, you know, you rob one thing, somebody has to pay, you know, if it's, if it's a give and take. I've never thought much of restriping and signals, if you make the signal faster or slower going north or south, east or west has to suffer. If you do it east or, east or west, north and south has to suffer, so I've never been an advocate of signalization, timing and stuff, I'm sure it's going to help something, but.
Right, and we, we would not be taking time from north or south. It would just be that because I can get people through quicker eastbound, if I can, even if it's three seconds from that signal, if I can clear that signal cycle, I can take that three seconds and add it to the other side. It's not affecting north-south. It just, when I, even when you make up what seems like a minor improvement, you can get a good operation, operational change from that. And remember that also, these, there is a back road to come in from Golden Beach, so there is a way to get through the back to the.
You mean Old Faith Church Road, or, or are you talking about down by this development here?
By this.
Triangle Drive, yeah, okay.
Yes, so understood that this, and, you know, the fix is going to have to be when Fred's Liquor's on the corner, assuming that that will someday redevelop, that we can steal some of their property and, you know, make a major change here. But in the meantime, this improvement would overmitigate the impact of this project.
The only, the only point I was making is, the same developer owns the Fred Liquor property, doesn't he?
I, I cannot.
I asked the developer, I didn't mean to necessarily ask you that, but. That's all I have on that particular one.
Okay.
For myself.
Before you continue, I have a question, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm not sure it's for you or it's for our, our staff here. I mentioned earlier to the engineer, and unless somebody on the board can correct my memory, didn't we approve a Chipotle five doors down from here, a couple meetings ago?
Yes.
So why wasn't that listed in the background conditions of approved developments for your traffic study?
We could have put it, we could have added that in there. What, what happened with the Chipotle was, it was a redevelopment, so they could take credit for the trips that were already there, for the hotel motel.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it was minimal impact, yeah.
From a motel to a, to a, to a Chipotle?
Yeah, come on.
I mean, I find that hard.
Yeah, well, it has to be, in order to require a study, it's not, it doesn't have to be less than a hotel, it has to be less than 50 additional peak hour trips to require a traffic study.
And a Chipotle wouldn't increase peak hour trips by 50?
Correct, just the peak hour, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it could have been.
The expert.
That's because of the pass-by percentages too, right?
Correct.
Is why it mostly always takes it under that.
Oh, I see.
That's correct.
Because it got, like, most of them have like a 76% pass-by.
I got you, I got you, okay, I understand that better now.
Right, they come off as well, yes.
I've got one question for you. When you were explaining the intersection, did you say that, you're on Golden Beach Road right now, and you're coming out, did you say that was, that right turn was stopped currently by the light? And by restriping, you were going to go to right on red?
Going to go to this now.
Correct.
But that's, I'm talking on the Golden Beach, on the north, northbound side of that, of 5.
I'm not proposing anything over there.
You're not proposing anything over there, it's all across the road?
Correct.
Well, that's not helping anything.
No.
Okay, that's my opinion.
And Mr. Thompson, it is, it will still be a D-level service. The idea with, in this area, we are allowed to mitigate our impact, so if the slate adds one second of delay, we have to improve it by one second, we're improving it by five. So we're overmitigating, understanding that it's still going to be a D.
Yeah, because in St. Mary's County that I can think of, there are three really bad intersections, and this is one of them. I won't say what number it is, but it's, it's, it's up there with number one, two, and three, okay.
Okay, and then we'll move on to improvement number two. So this is Maryland 5 at Travel Lane. So today, it's restricted to lefts in only, and then rights out on the side streets. Our proposal is to make it a full movement intersection, signalize it, provide a double left in from southbound 5. The idea of that double left is not, it's not necessary from a volume standpoint, but it helps us with timing. We can get people through the intersection faster and, and keep the progression on 5. Double left out with a separate right-turn lane. And then we'll have, we'll continue to have the right-turn lane in from northbound, but we're going to put, you'll see the little yellow, that's a raised island in the middle. I know there was some concern from the residents about folks that tend to use the shoulder and drive fast up 5 so that they can make the right on Golden Beach. So we're going to put a raised island in there that'll physically prohibit people from doing that at this location. And then you'll see there's a right, that right end that was discussed a little earlier, going into the Chick-fil-A. And then you'll see the cul-de-sac. The reason that we cul-de-sac that, it ties in today to Travel Lane, but with the volume that's expected here, that would never work, it would just be too close. So we cul-de-sac that because it's a state highway, and the state highway, we approached them about abandoning that, and it was a no-go. So our thought was to cul-de-sac it, it's not going to tie into Travel. And then the right end to Chick-fil-A becomes just an in-only. It's just a way to relieve some of that traffic, to get people into Chick-fil-A, and not having to have them drive down to the next entrance off of Travel.
How far is that distance between, from 235 or 5 into that right in?
That, I believe that's about 200 feet. But again, it's an in-only.
Right.
Those folks, I mean, theoretically, you're, if you're coming from the light from the southbound direction, you know, you're going 15 miles an hour. If you're coming from the north, it's not a free right, it's going to be a stop. So theoretically, you're nine to 10 miles per hour. So I don't think that's a major concern, the state has looked at it, you know, for any issues with backing into the state right-of-way, they don't, they're okay with it, they're okay with the cul-de-sac. They're okay with the signal, the signal, the other leg of the signal, the steakhouse will be part of the signal as well, they'll have indications and have access to the signal.
So Travel Lane is currently a private road, does it remain private?
That would be a question for Mr. Orochow.
Okay. He says yes?
Private.
Yeah, I'm just wondering who's going to maintain it, who's going to take care of it, who's going to plow the snow, I'm just.
The developer would.
Let me ask you another question that you may not know. At the end of Travel Lane, if you're traveling east, and you get back there, like past where all the lawnmowers are at the market, you can make a left and go up that back road behind some of the businesses and stuff, what's going to happen there? Do you know, or is that another?
Yeah, that's probably for Mr. Rosemore.
Okay. That's all I have on that section.
The addition of another light would now bring us up to eight lights between the McKay Shopping Center and the Wawa at 5 and 235, eight traffic lights.
Yeah, and one thing I could add to that is that this signal will be physically tied to the signal at Golden Beach, so they will be made, they will be coordinated for flow along Maryland 5.
I just, I just, when I was thinking about the fact that we did a bypass through Hughesville because we had one light that held up traffic for years, now we're going to have eight in like, what, four miles?
And you're adding another lane coming south, turn lane there?
The left, left turn.
And additional, so there'll be two?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about on 5.
Heading south on 5 and we traveled, there'll be two left-turn bays there.
Same length as the other one, I think, on the plans, it look like?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, now that you mention that, then the outside, or however you want to look at it, the two turn lanes, one of them are going to be able to turn into, unless they, they're turning all the way around, pulling a U-turn. Will that be a U-turn intersection too, by the way? If you're heading south, you've got two turn lanes there.
Yeah.
Is that going to be a U-turn?
We haven't designed the signal yet, but I think we could still allow a U-turn there.
Just for the inside lane.
On the inside lane.
Okay, so we're not going to take a U-turn, we've got two people, and we're going to turn in there. Basically, the way it looks to me right now, you got the, out, the southern turn lane is going to have to turn into one or two different spots, or then merge into it, and the other one is going to go straight through there, correct?
Well, there'll be two receiving lanes on Travel Lane.
But one of them is, is basically a turn lane that goes, one, the very first turn into Chick-fil-A, and the second one for the, the inner road. I'll say in between it, I'm not sure of the names of these yet.
Yeah, so the two lanes will be, I guess, the outermost lane will end, will be a right-turn lane drop into the Aldi.
Then it merges into the other one after that.
Yeah, it's one lane beyond that.
You're going to have to make some quick decisions. Do I eat, do I shop, or do I merge?
Okay, and then improvement number three. So Maryland 5 at Maryland 6, when the traffic impact study was prepared, this was a C-level of service, which is acceptable. After the study was completed and reviewed, the state highway administration came out here and made some changes to the intersection. And in doing that, they, they took away a through lane to head towards La Plata. So if you see the top where it says existing, it's kind of hard to tell there, but it's a through and then a left-turn bay only. In the past. Oops, sorry. Sorry, in the past, it was what's shown on the bottom as proposed. So it was a through and then a through shared with a left. So you could have two lanes heading across in front of the library, and then they would merge back into one, just in front of the trail crossing, just before the trail crossing. So the state highway went out and they made some changes to the trail crossing, they thought, you know, maybe we had some safety issues there. So they put up a flash, the flashing beacons, so you have, you don't have to, but somebody on the trail can push the button, and then it'll flash to alert motorists that somebody's about to cross the trail. The state law is that the vehicle has to yield to the pedestrian or the bike. So the state went out and made these changes as part of that safety improvement for the trail, they took away that additional through lane. When they did that, they caused the intersection to go to an F-level of service. I'm sure there are many people in this audience that will attest to the fact that. there are many people in this audience that will attest to the fact that it was terrible, and Route 5 was backed all the way up almost to Golden Beach. I've had numerous conversations with State Highway about allowing this developer to put that lane back so that we can have two lanes crossed. The most recent meeting I had with the state was January the 23rd. State Highway was there, the county was there. So we talked through how to make this intersection function at an acceptable level again. What the state found, they went out, because I badgered them every week, they went out and they looked at it, and they found that they had some equipment failures that tie this signal to the one to the south at Maryland 236. They fixed that. They made some signal timing changes to give more time to Route 5 south. So I think it has improved significantly, but we are still experiencing a D-level service now, which is unacceptable. So State Highway has agreed that they are going to do some additional modifications to the trail. They're going to put some quick curb along the shoulder areas so that vehicles, if somebody stopped to let somebody cross, that another vehicle can't come up and go around them on the shoulder. That seems to have been the problem with that trail. So they're going to put this in as a temporary, as a trial, and they're going to watch it. And if they feel like that's safe enough, they're going to allow the developer to make that permanent and put the lane back in. If that does not occur, there's another fix for the intersection. That's not as good of a fix. It's not a long-term fix. But we could re-stripe eastbound to provide two lanes crossed. Right now, it's just one lane crossed into the median. Doesn't help the intersection as much, but it would mitigate this developer's impact. So I have two options here. We're waiting for the state because we want to put that lane back in heading towards La Plata, and hopeful to get that in the next few months. But if not, we can certainly re-stripe the eastbound direction and mitigate for this project.
Well, since nobody wants to say anything, I'll say it. I don't know that this is really going to impact up the road. It's nice that this intersection's going to get fixed. It can take anything. I would worry more about this intersection for buggy traffic and such going through it than traffic. And it's good that the state highway in their kind self is willing to help with that intersection.
Yeah.
But I'm more worried about what's up north than I am with this one. That's just my opinion.
In my opinion, it's the same thing. It's great that they're mitigating that, and it's great that they're mitigating the other side of Golden Beach Road, but the main side of Golden Beach Road gets nothing. And I'm not saying that this development particularly has a major, major, major impact on that. I'm not saying people are, every car's going to go down all along Triangle Road and come back out on Golden Beach Road, but it is going to add traffic to that, I think. And I know you said it's a one or two seconds or something, and I guess the state has already said that's okay. As far as mitigation, I don't see me mitigating the two spots that, for this development, I don't think need to mitigate. Not that I'm a traffic engineer, and I thought I worked for the state. Common sense-wise, you're not mitigating where mitigation is needed, to me.
Yeah, and Maryland 5 at Travelled Lane, there is a huge effort there to...
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I mean, to make everything function and...
Well, you really can't function well without that light. That light's been needed for, you know, nobody wants an extra light, but if you ever needed one, it was right there. I mean, you go up there on the weekend, my God, I wouldn't have, I don't live at that part of the county, have been through it many times. But to have to deal with that every weekend...
I was up there Saturday. My grandkids like walk around the market. We was up there Saturday, but the traffic gets something up there on Saturday.
And that's in the middle of the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that's why the state initially put the bollards up that they did.
They were putting some more on, in Saturday when I was up there, some more of the bollards. Like, if you're coming north, they were putting more in the road. I'm not sure what they were for, over in the intersection, heading north in like the turn lane, I guess. I don't know if they're trying to stop U-turns there, or if you can even do them. I'm not 100% sure, but they were tarring the things down and putting them poles up Saturday, State Highway was. I'm not sure why, but...
That's all, well, there was an extra picture in there that I just, we added this picture just to show what the state had done for the crossing there to improve the safety.
Jack, let me ask you a few more questions. Is that all the improvements, mitigation? I have a few more for traffic before I ask the developer some questions. All the proposals in this plan for the mitigation and the re-stripping and the lights and the additional turn lane into Travelled and Travelled Lane, well, I guess if they own Travelled Lane, they can do what they want, except that the intersection would have to be approved, I would assume, by State Highway?
Yes.
But all that other stuff, everything else that is within a state road, or right-of-way, or turn, or movement, it's all hinged upon an approval by State Highway. So this plan that we're looking at approving, if it's approved, is still hinged upon all them ifs?
The state highway has approved this conceptually. We will have to go, we've started the process for signal design, so there could be tweaks, but they have approved the concept.
So they've approved the light?
Yes.
You may have to change a couple of things. That's the main thing, is the light, I guess?
Correct.
Okay. And when I looked at the traffic impact study, it looked like, and I can never read these traffic impact studies anymore, they used to have really nice, I'm not saying it's not nice, but it's very confusing to the layperson like myself.
You do that on purpose, Mr. Banker.
Yes, I've been believing that. The total trips of the proposed new plan on page 21 shows 7,325. Is that accurate?
Total daily trips?
Yes.
7325, yes.
And that's half in and half out? Is that what that means?
That's correct, and that does not include pass-by trips. We do not take pass-by trips off of a total ADT. So probably about...
I think this had less, you're like 50 or 51?
It's about 50%, because it's 50, for the Chick-fil-A in the PM peak, it's 55% pass-by. For the supermarket, 24%. So somewhere around 50% of that is going to be vehicles that are already on the road.
Okay. My point is, well, I don't know, if I go through the Aldi down in the park, which I do quite often, I'm not just hoping I pass by. It's a destination for me. So I don't, you know, them specialty stores to me are not something that you necessarily pass by. And I think, given it 50%, I think that's even more generous than normal, isn't it?
Not for Chick-fil-A. That's pretty typical. For the supermarket, we had 24% in the PM, which is taken from ITE, but like you said, it may be for the bigger...
Right. So the existing trips now, it said was 1,094. So I guess you have to add the existing to the new, and you're getting that. Is that what's projected at the whole development, you know, the end result of there?
That's just theirs, yes.
Okay. My question is, where does this show me, I always ask you about the distribution? Where are things coming in? And you used to say a nice percentage, 50% here, 50% there. Now it's got all these road charts with numbers that I...
I know. Page 23.
Okay.
And it is a map.
There it is, okay.
So 60% from the north, 40% from the south, but we split those up, as you can see. So 20% at the very top of the page, that's folks heading north and, you know, from the north on Route 5, and then 25% from Golden Beach, 15.
I'm talking about going in and out of the egress and ingress that is proposed for the plan.
I got you. The percentage of what's in and out. Okay.
It seems like that's not ever in these anymore. I'd like to see what they propose, you know, is coming in and going out. Where do they think based upon, I mean, it used to be included in a lot of these plans.
Right, and I think, and I can in the future add those in. If you look at the chart on page 21 that you were looking at initially, if you, like the very first line for the Chick-fil-A, in the PM, there's 150 vehicles coming in, 185 going out. So that, the percentage of those, that's the percentage of ins and outs, and that's taken directly from ITE.
But what I'm saying is you have three ways in and out. I'm looking for the percentage of each individual road. It used to say that. It used to be a map in there that said, this one's going to have 30% in and 30% out, this one's going to have, but it doesn't have that any longer.
Right.
It doesn't show us where you're projecting the traffic to be.
For the site access.
For the actual site access.
Okay, I got you.
It used to have that, but it doesn't, if you could include that...
Right.
In the future, site access.
Yes, I'll certainly do that. And the reason it's not in this one is because Travelled Lane was private. Typically, if we have a public road, and we don't show the percentages, I agree with you, but we'll show the ins and outs. But yes, in the future, that's something I can add if that's beneficial for you, for sure.
Okay, let's see. We already beat the queuing space up. Let me ask you a question about, can we bring up the site plan again? No, back to the actual where it shows the Chick-fil-A, and that's fine. If you're coming north, and they're turning to get on that Loop Road, what is the, is there an approach? Because right now, you basically, you turn off the road and come up into a little lane, the Loop Lane right there. It's no real turn-off lane to come up in there. What's going to be right there?
We are not proposing any changes there. Initially, like I said, we reached out to the state to try to get them to abandon the road. They were not agreeable to that. We're projecting that, you know, based on our distributions, we have 40% of the people coming from the south, that probably 30% will use that to enter the property. Don't have anybody exiting there, because if you're, you can only make a right out. So if you want to make a right, if you want to head north, chances are you're going to head north.
What I'm saying is, there's no slowdown lane there...
Correct.
For people to get over that wants to use that southern, I mean, that, whatever, I don't know if that road even has a name, but that is an entrance, isn't it?
It is.
To get onto Loop Road, and then it goes all the way up the length of that past parcel nine, correct? Is that...
That's not part of the Loop Road. That's a new proposed road, to go back, that Courtney's pointing out now.
There's a turn there now that comes off of Route 5 into the market.
It's further south of there, yes.
Further south of there. But what I'm saying is, there's no approach there. It's no...
There's no deceleration.
No deceleration lane at all, and I would assume that this is going to cause, maybe not on Saturday mornings like it does now, but I would assume, this is normally going to cause more traffic to have to go from, well, people don't do 55 anymore, and that's not your problem or the developer's problem, 70, and get down to a speed where they can all of a sudden turn with no lane to decelerate. It doesn't seem like a very, it just does not seem like a, like I say, you're doing mitigation in spots that are okay for something, but they're, to me, they're really, that's really an overlook, in my opinion, on that of having, and I know it doesn't have it now, but you're going from basically one day a week of traffic to every day of the week, maybe except Sundays, I guess Chick-fil-, I guess this one's going to be closed on Sundays also, I'm assuming, but...
Right.
It just seems like there should be a lane, whatever the required decelerating, we see them on most projects, and there's none, and there's none here. So...
Right.
To me, that's a, that's a problem.
Right.
And there's also a couple of businesses that tap off of that Loop Road that are, that are south of this development altogether, the Sawmill and things like that. They do tap into that off of Loop Road. They come in, I'll say, behind the buildings of the current farmer's market and get back in there. And if, I'm just looking at the county GIS map right now. I don't know what day they took this picture, but there's a lot, there's a lot of cars back in there at various, at the various businesses that are there. So...
Yeah, and that's, that intersection exists today. It's a state intersection. We did not get any comments from the state about revising that.
Maybe that should be looked into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't...
Say you don't want to cut the, you know, with all this happening with Chick-fil-A and stuff, you don't want to cut the existing businesses off that are there.
No.
But that's going to remain, the turn is like right here.
Yeah.
There's just no way to...
I mean, if you've got extra people slowing down, now they're either going to go past that, that lane that you just pointed out.
Or they're going to run into the back of somebody.
Turn there, and then they can go in there and come up here. But there's, as I say, there's other businesses that are back in there, so that full southern, which on that road, which doesn't have a name, needs to have some consideration for those businesses.
Yeah, I'm just saying, with adding full-time businesses now, that's going to be open all the time, in a restaurant and...
And you're still going to have a farmer's market off of this, off of this Travelled Lane, at the back of it. You're going to have the new...
Yeah, but they can, I'm just, I'm just talking about cars going in here to get to the Chick-fil-A, and when this is opened, they're going to be coming in from the south. I'm pointing down to the far south where Route 5 intersects Loop Lane, so everybody knows what I'm exactly talking about.
Mr. Orochow, come up to the microphone, please.
Allison Orochow, I would just want to mention, if you go to the third slide, what you're discussing in your, as you can see, I think it's the third slide. Excuse me, I think it's the third slide. That one shows the Loop to the south, and then what you're all talking about, excuse me, what you're all talking about as far as the beginning of the Loop Road, how it transitions and so forth. And so, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, so you...
That's a good picture. We appreciate that. So I guess that's my, that's my point, is that you're going from something that, that entrance has been there a long time, I'm assuming, but now you're adding businesses that's going to be occupied seven days a week, and you've got cars that's got to go from, you know, whatever the speed limit is, down to be able to turn. And I understand the state may not have made a comment about it, but I really think that's a major problem here.
Yeah, we can take a look at that, and it looks like there's a shoulder area there. So that's probably what people use today, is the shoulder. It is legal now to do that since October of 2021.
Well, it's actually legal to go around the car on the shoulder, but you're talking about ingress and egress.
Right.
So that's camping down that part of it and turning it into something completely different.
Right.
Plus, I don't want somebody coming around me right there.
Yeah.
It's bad enough.
We can certainly take a look at that, providing a deceleration lane there.
And I think, because right now, you're right, they use the shoulder. That's what happens. If you know the, if you know the turn's there, you use the shoulder, because if you slow up, you're going, someone's going to, anyway. So maybe, maybe if the state would agree, if nothing, more than... So maybe, maybe if, if the state would agree, if nothing more than that, if you're going to use the shoulder, you could use the shoulder, stripe it as such.
Right.
Make a deceleration lane, you know, we converted lanes on 235 from shoulders to travel lanes, you know, when we put those little abutments that you're talking about, so people act a little better, not so much better, but they act a little better. So it would seem to me that if, even if you didn't, for whoever does it, the state, you know, we, we send a lot of money to the state, maybe the state will send us a little something down this way. Perhaps, perhaps they would just consider to restripe it, maybe as a deceleration lane.
Right.
I mean, that in the, in the short term would be a whole lot better off than not having anything, because they're right, I mean, if you don't know it's there, you're going to, you know, you're going to wind up hitting the brakes, and it's going to be a problem, and the traffic's going to be a lot more than it is today.
Right.
So, just a thought.
Okay.
And Mr. Chandler, I just have one question for you.
Yes.
You're going over the various warrants here, and page 48, it states that Maryland State Highway is no longer releasing crash data consultants. When did, when did that change, and is there any reasoning behind it?
Well, it's been about, I want to say eight years now.
Okay, because that's the first time I've actually read that, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even when we do traffic signal warrant studies now, unless we're, as a, as a private consultant, unless we are doing a signal warrant analysis for a municipality or jurisdiction, we are not allowed to get accident data.
I bet. I said, "I bet."
Yeah, so we actually took the step, when they first, when the state highway first started doing this, we filed for a FOIA request to say, you know, we need it, we need it to do a signal warrant analysis, and they say it's protected from even a FOIA request, it's protected data. I think the reason that they did it was because there were so many attorneys...
You're back.
Actually pulling the data for lawsuits. So I think they stopped all of that, but they hurt us as consultants when we're trying to see if a traffic signal is necessary.
It, it, since in a previous, previous job of mine in Pennsylvania, we were, my agency was collecting traffic counts for PennDOT, and we were answering requests, I mean, basically had one person dedicated to doing that, so ultimately, they had me involved in writing an application that it was available for free online, so states look at things very differently. They thought having the crash data out there was, it's better to have the data out there for the public, but it's a shame that Maryland feels that way.
Yeah, and there's, there's also, for crash data, there's two different types, so every, we have access as the general public to every incident call that comes in. So you can go to your local sheriff, and you can say, "Hey, I want to see every call that you've had." Now, maybe a legitimate call, maybe they show up and there's nobody there, there's, none of that is filtered. So it's not helpful when we're trying to look for accidents that determine whether a signal will help. So we can't, what happens is the state highway administration, their Office of Traffic and Safety, they take all of that data statewide, and they filter it, and they, they look at whether there are fatalities, they look at the road, whether it was wet, whether it was snow, whether it was driver error, they look at all those things, and they put all that crash data into a form that says, "Hey, this area could use an improvement." It's, it's deficient in its safety. It's not drivers, you know, a lot of accidents are driver error, and they use that data to determine what they call high accident locations. So the state themselves, they look at their own intersections, and they say, "Oh, okay, yeah, we have an unusual pattern here that's not driver error, it's definitely related to something geometric, so we're going to make a change there." But now they won't share that data with us. So I don't know those high accident locations anymore. I can't get the data to verify that. So when we do a signal warrant, I just have to put, for that warrant, I can't get this data, so I don't, I don't know whether it's correctable, whether it's going to correct any incidents.
It's beneficial, some years ago, there were, some of us that were, that were here were advocates of putting a traffic light at St. John's on 235, and we struggled, struggled with the state with regard to warrants. "Oh, it's not warranted, it's not," and I guess, you know, a lot of us said, "Well, how many folks does it take? How many times do people have to run together for, for this to happen?" And we went, we pressed and pressed and pressed, and whether, you know, they, you know, someone saw the light, and they, and they put a, a light there, but clearly a light was necessary.
Right.
And having that data, and we pulled the data locally for that very reason.
Right.
But the state pushed back, you know, was pushing back constantly.
Yeah, because they, there are several warrants, you, you look at volume warrants...
Right.
And on a side street, the, the average number is you need 53 left turns per hour for eight hours of the day. That'll generally get you the volume warrant. Then you have to look at accident data, which we can't do now. There are a number of factors, just because you meet the volume warrant doesn't mean that the state will allow you to put a signal in.
We run into this, the mitigation issue, not once or twice, but lots. And so if you can't bring up, you know, you can't bring up an intersection to X, whatever X is, then you have to go to the next intersection, in this case, maybe six, and try to mitigate at some level to, to offset your inability to mitigate for the, for the one that you're actually trying to mitigate for. And it becomes very convoluted. I mean, at FDR Boulevard and four, we couldn't make the warrants and do that, so they wound up at Wildwood Boulevard, and there was never a light there. Needed one, wasn't warranted, so what happened was, it got mitigated into existence. So, I mean, I...
Yes.
You try to do this with your hands tied behind your back. I could not do this, I cannot do your job.
You're feeling my pain, Mr. Evans, I've been at this for 30 years.
So I just had a couple questions from Ms. Chandler, just, I wanted to make sure we're on the record. When, just for the, for the listening audience, when you did your traffic study, you took the most conservative approach, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, for example...
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So you took the most conservative approach, so for example, the growth rate, the rec, the data showed .37, but you applied a point, a five, a .5%, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, the improvements to Golden Beach Road, understanding the board's and the commission's comments, and we take those to heart, with the mitigation provided at five and Golden Beach Road, it will improve the situation better than it is today without this project, correct?
That's correct.
And as this, we're at concept site plan, but as we move through, we've talked a lot about the fact that these are state roads, and that you've been working with the state. As you move forward, you'll continue working with the state, for example, to look at that decel lane, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I am not a personal injury attorney, that's for the record.
Good shot there, Ms. Spear. What else you have for us?
That's all I have.
Any other questions from Ms. Chandler before she goes and hides from us for a little while? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll go bring the developer up. Does anybody on this board need a break?
I do.
Okay. Before I get you up, why don't you let us take a five-minute break?
Oh, sure.
If that's okay, I appreciate you.
It's approved.
Okay.
No.
...over the inside of that development.
Right.
But there are people that like to think that they do.
Okay, we're back in session.
I'm a businessperson first.
So Justin Rosemore with the developer is here to answer some questions I know that the board has.
No, I did, I did, yeah, I swore you meant.
You swore me in.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
So, actually, I was going to answer questions. I didn't have anything prepared to say, I, I just wanted to answer your questions.
Okay, I have some.
Sure.
With the current picture that's up there, it's a great picture, when you come in travel lane, heading east, and you get down to that other road on the left, is that road right there? What is that road? Is, is that Triangle, or does Triangle meet up at the end of that?
I'm not sure if that road has a name to it, do you know, does it?
It, it does not. I was up there yesterday and the day before.
Yeah, I was down there too Saturday, I happened to look when I was at the market.
The whole backside of the property.
Yes.
Okay.
There is, but I don't know, maybe somebody out here knows the name of it, but I didn't see a name anywhere.
I'm not sure.
Still, I think...
It's not posted.
Yes, it's not.
Sorry.
So, so we... They're not be posting people...
But we, we, it's called Henry Lane, so on the old, Platts, Henry, Henry, on the old Platts, it's...
The lane runs down between, runs from, from 235 down the side by the market, that's where Henry Lane runs. The one we're talking about, I think, is the one that runs down the backside of this property from Henry Lane all the way to Golden, well, all the way, you know, it's convoluted, but to Golden Beach eventually.
The Triangle.
You can see it on the, on the map, if you look at it, right on here, yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
Not an extension of Triangle Lane, but I don't believe it's called Triangle.
Okay.
Okay, my...
Can't, can't have...
My, my point about that is, who owns that road? Is it public works, or is that part of yours also?
That's, that's part of our development.
Okay. So with the proposal of the farmer's market relocating back to there...
Yes, sir.
And with the new development in front, if approved, I think that intersection at Travel and whatever is going to get an awful lot of use, even people coming out of the Chick-fil-A, all these, that may not want to go back out on five, they go back up there, not saying that the people who are up that way want the traffic, but they could utilize that and go to Triangle, and then cross over, or Golden Beach Road, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
I think something needs to be done at that intersection. Would, would you, as the developer, be willing to put a roundabout there? There'd be an awful lot of traffic right there.
Yeah, that, I'm actually unsure.
But you own it.
Yeah, so we own that, I mean, it's something we can explore, I'm just not sure, we have a number of leases right back there that, you know, we shouldn't be able to work around. I believe a portion of that is actually owned by the state for the, is that a pumping station, a pump station there?
Oh, you're talking about the Metcon property?
Metcon.
It's internal, it's just.
If you have to speak, Mr. Orocho, come up to a microphone.
Yeah, do you just wanna stay up here? Thanks.
My apologies. So, there's a piece of property that's, it's Metcom, and it's, if you look at the, it's if you look at that area that looks like a circle or not, like a elongated track there down the middle of the drawing, keep cursor moving to the left, just keep moving the cursor to the left, right there. There is the, is the area where Metcom has a parcel, and that's gonna remain there. So, I think what Justin, Mr. Rosemore was referring to, with a roundabout there, we're not sure how much we can encroach on that piece of property and obviously disturb it with, with what's there, so. And, and I just looked at the tax map. So, what happens is Henry Lane from the top is labeled Henry.
It is.
It touches this north-south, but then it's, it's not labeled, so we just refer to it as Henry because it's the closest name adjoining this north-south road extension, so.
But I just, I think if they had some kind of a, of a traffic control device there, and I'm talking about a light or nothing, it would certainly make traffic, I think it would ease traffic out of your new site also. People would be more willing to.
To Golden Beach.
To use that, I think.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, I, so I think that's something we can explore. It's something we can look at. You know, as Nelson, Mr. Orocho pointed out, as long as it's not encroaching on the Metcom property there, but that is something that we can take a look at.
I mean, there's always the option of putting a stop, you know, if it's not currently stop signed and lane, lane widths that would be more conducive to movements and flow, we could look at that, too.
Yeah, I don't think a stop sign would necessarily, I mean, it'd be guessing, I think there's a stop sign there now coming one way. I parked there the other day and looked around after we had walked around the market and stuff, but.
So, I think looking at it, what I, what I'm hearing the client say is that he's willing to, as we move forward, where he's willing to explore that and improvements in that area based on available right-of-way as far as land, based on an examination of his leases, existing leases, and of course, the design and associated costs with that. But certainly something that we want to explore.
Okay. Second thing is the decelerating lane that we talked about on Route 5.
Right.
To, to me, I don't even see how state highway would have given conceptual consent to a plan that has no way for cars to slow down off of a main thoroughfare.
Right. Yeah, so I agree. I mean, I think deceleration lane, right there at that entrance, coming from the south headed north, wouldn't make sense. It, once, once again, I mean, it's all a question of right-of-way. As long as the right-of-way exists and state highway permits us to put in the deceleration lane, that is something I'm, I'm willing to add.
Okay. I know there's no space up on Golden Beach Road. I touched on this with Ms. Chandler, and, and I heard a couple of other members said it also. You're mitigating spots just to get disapproved, that makes no impact on, on this, in, in my opinion. You know, you're doing down Route 5 and 6, which helps down there, and you're doing the opposite side of Golden Beach Road, which to me has no impact on all the cars that's still gonna be on Grape Mills Road if it moves one more car through in a, in a second. I don't see, you know, the, this plan has to add more than a car or two, I would venture to say, so I don't see how restriping and re-timing something, if even approved, helps that. And it looks to me like there could be, I know that failing intersection is not your fault, but it looks to me that we should be doing our due diligence to improve things that need approving. I mean, it's like putting a, putting a overhead light somewhere where there's never gonna be anybody there just because it's easy to get to and put in, you know, you don't have the lights where the sidewalks are, but we're gonna put one over here. This doesn't seem to help with this project. Yes, does it overall mitigate something? Maybe so. Maybe that's the way the code or the ordinance is written, you know, maybe that's our fault. But it just seems like there would be a little more thought given to those other couple things I mentioned and possibly Golden Beach Road, if there's any space at all. I don't know if there's any, you know, I don't think there's too much space between curb to curb. Exxon's got curbs up, I guess, and Fred's Liquor has curbs up, I'm assuming.
Right. So, is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. So, who was it? I think it was Sue or Jackie that discussed this previously. So, the, that area does belong to Fred's Liquor. The entire parking lot, everything there is under a lease with them. And then, so what Jackie was pointing out is correct. I mean, when we go to redevelop that, that is something that has to be addressed, you know, with the addition of possibly another lane. When, we have long-term leases with all those people there, whether it's Fred's Liquor or the adjacent, everybody in that building has a lease and has the parking lot that we cannot change without their permission. So, is that something we can do when their leases come up in five, seven years? Then that's, that's the opportunity. That's the right time to make that change. But it's not something I can unilaterally do today, you know, because they have a right to that land.
Okay.
And also, going to the east from the intersection at Golden Beach, when it transitions from the liquor, from that leased parcel, it's, there's almost a spur piece that belongs to the joiner that they own, so that there's not just all Justin Rosemore piece, there's gonna be some neighbor having to help work out to get that lane width to what probably S H N B would want. So, there's others that would have to get involved, so it's not, not solely all. There's sure, there's some that, again, as he said, some leasing issues get cleared and maybe there's some stuff, but there's also working with the joiner.
Okay, I can accept the leases in, in place. Let me ask you a question about, we were talking about possibly was any consideration giving to, given to swapping the.
Correct. Yeah. So, Chick-fil-A requires the frontage. Aldi does not require the frontage. Would they like the frontage? I'm sure they would, but, you know, that wasn't an option for them. If we wanna keep Chick-fil-A, and which brings up another subject, Aldi wants to be there because Chick-fil-A is there bringing in traffic.
Sure.
So, if you take out Chick-fil-A, you tell them that they can't have the frontage, well, Aldi also leaves. So, more than likely, can I say that 100% for sure? No. But, you know, that's the reason they approached us and wanted to be at our site is because they see this as a redevelopment opportunity where traffic is gonna be driven into the site, so they wanna be there.
Sure.
So, unfortunately, I can't really switch them. If Chick-fil-A doesn't get it, get the frontage, then they're just not going.
Understand. Courtney, would you bring that drawing back up of the proposed?
The proposed Chick-fil-A?
The proposed, the whole, you know, of the Chick-fil-A and the Aldi and. Thank you. How about that one entrance, that north entrance that we talked about coming off of Travel, being so close.
This one.
Coming in, you know, I, I just foresee not only a problem of cars coming in there and then coming down through the parking lot, waiting to get into the.
Cue.
Cueing lanes, you know, for ordering, then you got the cars coming off Loop Road, and you could actually, in theory, have cars coming off of private coming in that way. So, you got cars sitting in three directions trying to get into, into the cueing lanes. I, I mean, not, not that that's a road problem, other than the, the top one, you know, I don't know if we'll, you know, you do have more lanes than the other one for cueing, has more space than the other ones. I just see some.
Some potential.
Potential problems, especially with that north entrance. I, I wasn't sure if it was, I'm gonna assume, and it was put there because they can come straight down that lane into the cueing.
Sir, that's correct.
So, if it was put further back, then they gotta weave through the parking lot, I guess, to get to the.
Correct.
To the drive-throughs.
And then also, there, from the Loop Road or the cul-de-sac road, you do have a stop sign, you know, right there. Granted, you know, maybe somebody can run the stop sign, but that is supposed to help control. I think you're right. I think there should be a stop sign coming from that other way as well, you know, to control and, you know, people take their turns, which hopefully they do, to enter the drive-through. The prototype that you see, you know, as Nelson pointed out, is their most recent prototype. And, you know, we try to work with what they give us. Nelson and Jackie and I, you know, try to work through and make suggestions of changes. You know, and one of the points that I think Nelson brought up, that people are out in the parking lot, they're also on the outflow side. I think somebody pointed out, Mr. Evans, I think you pointed out, that they're trying to help people, like, if, just like what you pointed out, if, if their order isn't ready, they're sent through to wait on their order. They wanna keep people moving as quickly as possible, and that's also the reason that their store has enlarged the kitchen. I think one of the questions was seating. How, how does that affect seating? While I was waiting, I text the Chick-fil-A people to ask them about seating compared to the California store. So, they said it's really operator-dependent, but they expect the seating would be pretty much the same, even though the kitchen is larger. They try to arrange other things such as their aisles to accommodate the seating. So, but it's really up to the operator, so can I tell you for sure that it's gonna be the exact same? No. But chances are, it's gonna be pretty close to the way it is at the California store.
Is this store in square-footage size about the same size as the Cal?
Yes, sir.
But so much they can do to that kitchen, I mean, okay.
Yeah, their clientele is gonna be more drive-in than in, than eat-in, by, by a lot.
More drive-in?
Yeah, more dri, I mean, you know, the, you know, California's a good example. You know, you can have people queued up in California everywhere and go, go inside, and there'll be a half a dozen people inside.
Right.
Most people are trying to get, they're on their way someplace else, everybody's in a big hurry, and they don't want to eat inside. And so, a lot of these restaurants are doing the very same thing. Their drive-ins, they're accommodating people, more people through the drive-in, and that's what I was saying there. They need to get these people through these, these aisles, and the only way they can do that, especially if they have a problem, is to move them out into the parking lot.
Right.
And get them, get them out of the queue so that, so it doesn't, doesn't create a problem, a bottleneck.
I'm pleased to move them.
Right.
Let me ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
Then I'll be, stop bawling, yeah. We talked about a couple things that you said you'd be glad to look into. Just from my point of view, that doesn't satisfy the fact that it may be something, and I'm only speaking for myself, I don't know about the rest of the board, that I would want. If this went to a vote and we put the conditions of decelerating, roundabout, is that something that, I mean, we could do that anyway, I'm just asking, is that something that you would feel comfortable with? And I know if the state highway comes back and says you can't do that, then I'm not sure if they'd have to come back here since it was a condition of the motion or, or what, but I mean, I.
Go ahead.
So, just a couple things. I mean, I think that anything like that would have to be absolutely subject to state highway approval, so that, you know, in fairness to the developer who's working in good faith with you, he, he doesn't have to continue to come back. But what I would also point out to you of what you've heard Mr. Rosemore say, and he's been before you before, he was before you recently, is what you've heard him say is that he is redeveloping, and he's going to obviously be before you again in the future. And if I know, planning commissions, you all tend to have long memories. So, I think what he's proffering to you is that I'll, I'll work in good faith with you to explore these items, both on my end, with your county department, with Lugham, and with the state highway association. And I think that you, as Mr. Rosemore, comes forward with other projects, are certainly gonna remember whether or not he worked in good faith with you.
Well, I, so I'm sorry. I, you know, sometimes the person speaking thinks he knows more than his attorney, should probably shut the hell up, but I'm gonna go ahead and speak anyway. So, I think in one of our previous planning commissions, you asked, would we make a change, do some improvement? I don't remember which one, but you conditioned it, you qualified it and said, if permitted by state highway and the right-of-way is there, you know, because if somebody else owns that right-of-way and they say, well, I'm not gonna sell it to you, you know, that's, you're trapped. You can't do anything with that. But, you know, I give you my word, you know, that I'm gonna do everything that I possibly can, and you can make it conditioned, you know, put in the deceleration lane, put in that Loop Road, and qualified based on if you have the right-of-way and obtain the state highway approval. So, and that I would be willing to accept.
Well, and what I would say is, as we said, the subject, the decelerating on the state highway approval, but I don't know if you wanna say a roundabout or some form of a traffic, and then I'm just qualifying because he's gotta explore. It may be a roundabout, maybe there's another solution, and again, it's subject to the constraints of right-of-way and the ability to design it. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Point taken.
I'm sorry.
No, hey, that's, that's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I, and the other thing I just wanna point out on that, I think that Mr. Rosemore's demonstrated, for example, the island that was discussed, that was, that he is very responsive to comments that he hears from the commission and also that he hears from the community, because that change to the design was specifically in response, if I recall, to comments that were raised by the community as he was working through the process.
Correct.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's the Mr. Rosemore or the, of course, nobody from the state here. We do have, have the county. I wonder how long, I'm not trying to hold anything up, just wondering how long it would take to get an answer back. I mean, to, to me, especially that decelerating lane is a very important part that I feel was overlooked in this project by somebody, not putting blame on the developer, but I think that's a very important part of, you know, having traffic going from one day a week to seven days a week, and everybody kinda knows the market's been there for 60 years or something, so Saturday mornings, you're gonna have some traffic slowing down and, and going in there. But, you know, with this, every day, you know, I feel that there's gonna be plenty of cars turning there. The estimate was for 40% of the traffic's coming from the south and 60 coming from the north. I don't know how we ever get to that, but irregardless, it's gonna be a lot of cars there. So, I was just wondering how long it typically takes to get an answer from the state or how long would it take to, not, not just probably from Mr. Rosemore, how much would it take to check the spaces, you know, back around where we're at, where I was thinking that a roundabout may be helpful to this project and the safety of the project and the egress around there, either from the county, I'm not sure if the county has any on that Henry Lane, who's, that's probably yours, or the Golden Beach developments also. So, seems to me like that, I guess you would have to, if you have all the easements there, I've seen roundabouts of multiple different sizes, small, large, two-lane, one-lane. You know, I'm just thinking, did we have an estimate if we could, not that we wanna hold you up, but I mean, if, after testimony, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna get done anyway, if we wanted to table it for a time and see if we could get, that's just me speaking, I'm not speaking for anybody else. Would like them, few things answered.
My thought would be that if you condition it the way you did, that would take care of it, because Mr. Rosemore's committed that if he, if the state gives him permission to put that decelerating lane in, then that's what he's going to do. So, I think your condition would allow it to move forward through to the next step. And remember that this is concept, so there are, you know, still approvals and work to be done to get to final site plan.
Okay. Couple.
Couple of questions to this, like Ms. Chandler might have to kick in on this. You have the traveler in the backstreet intersection, that's back in there that Mr. Van Kirk was talking about, but also out front, there was never, I mean, we've talked about a lot of changes that the state is looking into, hasn't given any input back on it and all that. The dreaded three words that I don't like in fee and lieu, has not been discussed with any of this. I mean, because it's, we were talking about the fixing of Golden Beach Road in five, I'll say on the east side, on the northbound lane, and it might be seven or more years before the liquor store lease comes up. Seven years is a long time, bad, bad intersection, you know. It doesn't need any more added to it, though the intersection, the new one that will be put in has been definitely needed for a long time, but you still have a major thoroughfare right through there. The state should have put that, you shouldn't have had to worry about that island. The state should have put that island in a long time ago to stop people from flying down that side of the road. There's, there's a few places in the county where, when I go to work in the morning, I have to take, take a good look before I go right, to turn right onto, on the Chancellor's Runway, because they fly from Walmart all the way down the side. Those islands should be put in in a lot of places, and the state should, should pick up on that. But I feel, I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that the state was going to do this. I know we're at concept, but that's our job to make this concept. You know, it shouldn't have to be hard after it leaves us. We shouldn't have to worry about, oh, if the state, suppose they tweak it, suppose they don't go with what they, what was proposed tonight, but then they say, well, they tweak it, well, it might have an impact on one board member that might not vote for or against, you know. Either way, we deal in facts, we need those facts. Sometimes we don't like how long it takes, and I know no developer likes dealing with the State Highway Administration, because they hold you all up. I mean, it's our job to make, you know, you're a landowner, you want to develop this, you shouldn't have to jump through hoops, you know, with the highway in order to get something built. I mean, we could give you an answer quick if we had State Highway, you know, either here or, I mean, there's only so much Mr. Gotch can answer. Let's see, good evening to Mr. Gotch, I saw you come into the room, the Director of Department of Public Works and Transportation. But, you know, it's a lot of those facts that we need to make a good decision. Look at all these people out here. I know what they're here to say tonight. I mean, I can pretty well guess, I don't know, I don't know what they're going to
Do you want me to guess? I think they're all here in support. Okay.
Yeah. Wishful thinking, but, you know, there probably are some, but there probably aren't, you know, and I mean
Not a fortune teller, as you can tell.
We've, we've dealt with projects in this area. It is a very compressed area. I mean, you have, stretches to 235 where you're coming up the road, all of a sudden, you're not coming up the road anymore. You're compressed down, and it all just bunches right in on there. And, you know, these people have lived there their lives, and they're coming out these roads, and we've got to make sure that, you know, they're, they're, they own as much of this land
Right.
Not the land personally, you know what I mean, the right to move in and out of their, their developments and such like that as anybody else.
So, I can help with the Golden Beach in terms of right-of-way. You know, that's something I can dedicate, is right-of-way to allow for that turn lane. You know, more than that, yeah, I mean, so when the land is available, you know, and no longer bound by a lease obligation, that right-of-way is there. So, I mean
Well, the problem being with that is the length of the lease. I mean, if you start, I mean, you could be, in a real, in a beautiful world, you know, you start your project in a year, and you have it there, you know, there's six more years of a bad corner right there that doesn't need any more, anything else. I mean, there's been some horrific car accidents right there on that corner. If you have a little thing on your phone that tells you that there's accidents, that intersection comes up a lot, you know, be it a bad, be it a bad accident or a slight accident, it still holds up traffic, things happen. That's no fault of yours.
Which hopefully travel lane with the new traffic light will also help, you know, slow down traffic through there.
Okay. All right. Anything else for?
I just, one thing for Mr. Rosemore. You said that this is a new design concept for Chick-fil-A that they're working with. I would feel comfortable if you tried to reach out to them again, go back, and make sure they understand the posted speed limit and what people are actually doing on five, and that turn onto the private road, and then the turn into their, I know that was outside of Ms. Chandler's jurisdiction, because it's, it's more the access of the property itself. I just have some concerns that, you know, it's going to be taken very fast, and that there may be some, you know, some accidents in that area. So, just, you know, to check with them and realize that, you know, here's a plan that, you know, you guys think works, our planning board, you know, commission has some concerns about, you know, is this a safe traffic movement? And I'm not traffic expert, so it's not, you know, for me to say, but just knowing how people go on there, I just feel that's the one turning movement that concerns me the most about entering the property. You know, and whether they're taking it too fast, and then they're crashing into cars that are queued up to leave travelers' lane, or, you know, or they take it and they're in their shrubbery of the property that you just planted, you know, that's, that's just something there that seems to be the biggest concern, because compared to all the other products we hear here, Chick-fil-A, I think, is very unique, and we all know that because of the fanatic support they get from people, and that people who are willing to wait in lines for a long time. I've had their chicken before, and it's pretty good. I don't frequent their businesses, because I just, I'm not a patient person. And the lines and the queuing, and I drive a pickup truck, and a lot of times, it's a personal safety concern that I'm out in a travel lane, you know, queuing up to try to get some fast food, and I just say, you know, it's not worth it for me. So, that's, that's my biggest concern about this. Other than that, you know, so, yeah, I would just, you know, I'm not asking, I'm just saying if you could, just, you know, to check with them and, and just, you know, explain our concerns about that, and that maybe there's, make sure that they're comfortable with the liability of that, of that turn
Okay.
Off the major state route.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one thought, and you can't tell unless you reconfigure, and that is the ingress and the egress to Chick-fil-A. You know where you have it, when you come off, when you come into it
Come up Loop Road?
Yeah, come up Loop Road.
Microphone.
Take your right, come on down. Can you move it? And it seems to me if you, that seems to be one of the
Speaking to a microphone.
That seems to be the biggest issue is, I mean, of mine, that is the backup that that could cause. So, if you, if you turn that entrance around, you're invert, I mean, invert the
Speaking to a microphone there.
I'm trying to describe this, because I'm looking at it, but I can't, because you can't see me touching it. If you take it, take that horseshoe, let's just say, you see the horseshoe you've got going?
Uh-huh.
If you turned it upside down.
And move it up here?
You're moving, you're moving the entrance down and
Moving the three lanes to the inner corridor.
Yeah.
Instead of coming in on the, where it says parcel eight, you have three lanes right there beside the P in parcel. She's talking about taking it and flipping it to the other side.
Oh, like this.
I have a
John, putting the parking here and the store on the other.
Oh, the parking down below.
Is that right? Is that what I understand you?
Yeah. Came here, I would show you what I mean.
Come here, come here.
You're talking about flipping
Get her to come over, so she can do it with a mouse.
Still cancer. See this right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Be up top here, and these entrances would be down here. So, you would have to, if it came
You don't have any road down there.
The traffic would go this way.
It's not what I thought.
I don't know, I'll figure that out.
I think the parking, the parking would be an issue if you flipped it upside down.
Because you got the parking
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Just a thought, guys.
What we're all here for.
Any, any other questions?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Why they pay you the big money?
That's right.
Anybody else have any
Down here?
Does anybody have any more questions of Mr. Rosemore while he's here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Greer, anything else that y'all want to put out before, now, let me just, and if I'm saying anything wrong, I have my main man, Joe Van Kirk, right here to straighten me out. After we listen to you, and then you've heard some concerns of ours, we're going to come to the point, after public testimony, where we would go over the case. Now, if there's any consideration by the applicant that they want to, and if the board insists on some information that we didn't get tonight, and that we'd like before we do it, we would continue it. If we did continue it, and new information came before us tonight, I would open it back up to public testimony again the next time, because any time new information is brought before the citizens or whoever is in the audience tonight that has questions, I would open that back up so that they could ask more, more questions. So, would it take a little longer? Yeah. Would it answer more questions? Yes. So, I just, it's my personal view of where things might, might go, but I just wanted to give you that little bit of a heads up, okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that insight. And what I would like to do, because I do know that you have public here that have been sitting here anxiously waiting to testify, is to allow the public to testify this evening, and then I would like the opportunity to sum up and address some of the points of consistency with the comp plan and the other findings that you have to make. And meanwhile, while the public is testifying, I will be sure to consult with my client.
Okay, because like I say, if, I don't want to close it out afterwards, well, we'll just find out what happens, see what the board says. I just want to give you a scenario of what might happen, might not, might not, you know. Okay. At this time, we will open up to public testimony. I have a list of names on a sign-in sheet. I also have a sign-in sheet for people that I guess just wanted to make sure that they were on here for information that might come forth. I will go through the list of, for public testimony as the sign-in sheet goes, and then if anybody else wants to afterwards, just raise your hand. I'm going to make, I'm going to ask everybody that comes up if they were sworn in, and then if you weren't, or you came late, or for whatever reason. Mr. Gotch, if I have to, remind me, if I have to ask you a question tonight, I have to swear you in before you come up. Don't, don't let me forget. We'll make sure everything is right tonight, okay? So, with that being said, first person on the list tonight was Mr. Dale Antos. If you come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Dale Antos. I'm President of the Golden Beach Civic Association. I've spoke before you, before, the Royal Farms. Good to see you all again.
Mr. Antos, you can, if you're representing your, all your constituents down there, you can have five minutes.
Well, thank you. I was going to ask for 20, but that's okay.
We come to a firm in the middle there, five minutes.
I'm not sure I actually represent all 1,200 lots in Golden Beach, but as I say, I'm head of civic association. We've had meetings, we've discussed the following with the developer, I've talked back and forth with them, and our community is excited about the Royal Farms and the Starbucks, which, and the Chipotle, which you all have approved. General feeling is the same with this project, especially getting a new grocery store. Food Lion being the only grocery store leaves no other choice, and the prices have gotten ridiculous. Want to buy some eggs for $8? We understand that the old McKay's will be a shoppers', and that will also help. I will, I am always available for comments and concerns, and I have not heard anything from the community that was unfavorable for this project, except for the same things that we're discussing tonight, and that is the congestion. Just like the Royal Farms, this is not truly a thing I'd think that will generate more traffic. It will generate more traffic in that area turning in and out, of course, but I don't think anybody's going to come from Crofton to come down here to our Chick-fil-A, or whatever, you know, I'm just being silly. But it's not like Disney World, which is a destination people come from all over. So, we only have to be concerned with a lot of the people that live in this, what, five, 10-mile circle, who are here anyway, and let's see if we could figure out a way to get them in and out and get fed. Makes sense to me. On this particular plan here, I looked at it, and I was the one that came up with this idea that said, you know, if you put an island there, it would slow those people down that you talked about that fly down the right-hand lane, and I'm sure most of you remember that horrific accident that was at Golden Beach Road. My thoughts were, is there anybody listening that we could put that island? That means if you're coming down the right lane, you have to turn right. How about another one up at the Chipotle? You have to turn right. And another one up at Burger King, you have to turn right. And that will eliminate the people going straight down that way. I know that's not why we're here, but that island, Mr. Rosemore, is very receptive to people talking to him, and he said, you know, that's a great idea. And sure enough, on this plan, first time we've seen it, the island was there. So, thank you, sir. You do listen to the community, as you said you did. We also talked, I said, you know those three lanes going in? When it backs up, you know, we want them to go back straight across. We've talked about that a bunch of times. Originally, that was over more, and if it backed up, you hit an island. He also moved that over. After looking tonight, I'm saying, I got even a better idea, maybe. Why don't we just close that road right there where the three are going in? Close it there, go up, keep going up, and line it up with the road going into the Aldi. So, now, if you're coming down the road, also close that one up at the cul-de-sac at the very top. You have to come down, you have to come into the Aldi, and instead of turning into the Aldi, you turn into the parking lot, and you can go and loop all the way around, and you'll have a lot more room for cars. That will also create space in the front of the Chick-fil-A for what you talked about. I ordered my food, it's not quite ready. I come out, I turn to the front, it will create extra spaces there. Now, yes, you'll have to move those six islands, maybe turn them around the other way or whatever, but I don't think that eliminates any parking spots. What it does do, it creates a straight shot twice the length of what the three lanes are, if you go all the way back to where that entrance is, coming off of travel lane or whatever that's called. Just a thought. So, if you close that one there, and you move the one on the side up to maybe line up, you're going to have a lot longer line going out before it starts backing up with a side road. Just a thought. I also asked some other questions, and he responded. He responded. I said, what's going to happen to this big white space down in the bottom right? There are buildings there. He says, well, they're all going away. We're getting rid of the farmer's market in, in our square. And he says, that may be a restaurant pad someday, that they will put it out there and say, hey, we've got a pad. How about an Applebee's? How about a whatever, whatever? We've been hollering for that for years and years, and never knew what the problem was. Everyone always told us, well, it's lack of sewer. We don't have sewer. He says, I've, I've got enough sewer to take care of that. I've got three ponds out behind, and that's the sewage treatment plant. So, good for us. We actually may be here someday looking to approve, how about Texas Roadhouse? How about, there is none.
Mr. Antos.
Place across the street? That's going away, St. Mary's Landing.
Your time's up if you want to wrap.
Oh, no, you said you gave me 20 minutes.
No, I didn't. I said I'd give you five.
Okay, and also that road coming in, yes, that definitely needs its own lane coming in. It's been like that for years. Very good man to work with, and he said he'll do anything that is necessary to get this project underway. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions, Mr. Antos? Thank you, sir. Okay. Joseph Rigel. And I did swear you in, correct, sir?
I'm Joe
I'm Joe Ridgell. I lived in the county my whole life. I'm concerned about the traffic and the overwhelming watershed that's gonna be from this project. As a county citizen, I live in Country Lakes. We travel, we don't go to Lexington Park, period. We don't go to Charlotte Hall, period. We shop in King George. So, I'm totally against this crap. I'm sorry. But to me, I don't want none of it. Just my opinion, and I know there's a lot of people in Country Lakes that don't want none of it. So, that's all I gotta say.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay. Josh Guy. Josh, we did swear you in, correct?
Of course you did.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please.
Sure. Josh Guy, 39160 Guy Family Way. You guys are in for a treat, because I'm a little sleep deprived. I've been sitting back here for an hour or two. But my main concern is with the, the indoor vendors at the farmer's market. Many are elderly and most have been there for 20-plus years. And I'd like to see a commitment from the developers to allowing the current longtime vendors first opportunity in renting a space in the relocated market. The market has provided a source of tourism for the county and has provided local vendors a chance to sell their goods for 80 years. And I also would like to know whether the proposed buildings for the farmer's market are open space or if they are enclosed buildings. I, I don't recall that that was ever brought up. So, those are my concerns. I'd also like to submit to the chairman, this was a petition that went around with over 400 signatures in opposition to the project and the relocation of the farmer's market, if I may.
Okay, you can give that to staff here. Thank you, Courtney.
And that'll be it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Guy? Thank you, Josh. Okay. Carl Ward?
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Carl Ward. My address is 37790 Indian Creek in Charlotte Hall. And I came here, I'm concerned about the infrastructure for all this work. The water, the sewer, and we've already dealt in on the highway. Can anyone tell me where that water and sewer is coming from and going to?
We can get that answered for you, sir.
I was wondering, because I live in the Indian Creek subdivision, which is right behind Tractor Supply. And I've heard you bring up Triangle Road. That's as deadly as Route 5, or as far as number of accidents. That has multiple fast foods, has a small shopping center, has Food Lion. Food Lion is, that particular one, is the largest food line in their whole chain as far as profit-making. That is a very, very busy store. Triangle Road, shot. There's potholes in there. Every week, there's a new one. They'll fill it up, there's another one. You talk about the end of Henry Lane. You go out to the other end, you can sit there five or 10 minutes to get on to Golden Beach Road. Triangle Road's the same way. And when you go out, you're taking your life in your hands. I'm asking, though, the primary reason is because I live in Indian Creek subdivision. It's approximately 72 homes in there, where people, most of us are retired or on the doorstep to retire. And we're concerned that this new development is gonna in some way impact our septic tanks, our wells and all, that we'll be forced to go in and change something we cannot afford. We're living from month to month on fixed incomes. And you talk about Route 5? Come up there on a weekend, I invite any of you, and just try driving around there now. You know, I, I, I hope you would, before you make any big decisions. I hope you just take and look at it. I've been there for 42 years. I came down here because I fell in love with St. Mary's County. But I tell you, the luster's starting to wear off. You know? I know these gentlemen are out there, and they're trying to make an income, they're trying to do something. But I was told at one time, if they put homes in there and all down on Golden Beach Road, they could cap, make us cap off our wells, close our septic tanks, and make us hook up to this. Is any of that true? You know, I don't hear any answers, but is any of it true, that they can force us to do that?
We can't answer that question for you, I don't believe, you know, I'd like to, but I mean, we have some experts.
Can you shake your head up and down or back and forth, if you can't answer? You know, I just need to know.
Well.
I'm talking on behalf of a lot of people in my subdivision.
Okay. Well, we're gonna try to get some of those questions answered for you.
Well, I thank you for the opportunities.
Okay. Yes, sir. Does anybody have any questions?
I think we have a Metcom rep here that will probably be able to answer that after.
I was going to.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead and come up there. Anna Wells?
I can't make them up. No.
Yes, I'm Anna Wells with Metcom. So, the water in this area, there is already water service on this lot. I believe that the concept plan will include additional line for water to basically loop the system better, so make it better for maintenance, and it'll add additional fire hydrants. It shouldn't have any impact on the rest of the system for the water in this area. The sewer service is private, so unfortunately, I can't comment on that, so.
Okay. But now, the, the water, you say, does it do just this development? Or does it do, I'll say, up there where, where these folks live, up by where McKay's was and all that? How far does this water?
It does follow Route 5 up north towards that area. I don't know exactly where it stops.
Okay.
My question is.
You have to, if you want, you gotta come up to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's, it's important.
My question is, will I be allowed to keep my well, to keep my septic? I have a great investment in it. When I bought the house, they didn't give me a piece of paper saying, oh, if your well or your septic goes bad, your neighbor's gonna have to pay for it. You know, if they're gonna do this building, they should have to pay for their own infrastructure. It should not come back on my shoulders and my neighbors.
No, and, and I don't believe it is. I've, I have heard in past projects before that the county doesn't require you to, to hook up to any, I'll say, county-owned system.
Well, they were discussing putting a housing development on Golden Beach Road, and it was brought up that we're gonna put sewer through your neighborhood in order to help pay for it, and you're gonna be hooked on to it.
Well, you would have to take, you can call down to Metcom to find out that. I mean, I don't want to quote anything, but we were told in past projects, mind you, not, not this one, but that the county would not require you to, to hook into a system as long as your system is, is active and working. If you were, especially your sewer system were to fail, and there is county sewage in front of you or within reach of your house or, and/or neighborhood, then they would require you then to hook into it.
I can understand that.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Howard.
Merle.
Yeah. So, my experience with regard to Metcom, I live in Tall Timbers. And in Tall Timbers years ago, everybody's septic system was failing. So, the federal government ran a line from 249 all the way to Potty Point. And along the way, they made hookup available as they, as they went down the line. Now, you had a choice. You didn't have to hook up. Here, here it is. You have a grinder pump. We're gonna put the grinder pump in the ground, and we're gonna be responsible for that. You're gonna be responsible for the grinder pump to your home. That was the expense. Your choice. Hook up or don't hook up. Here's the downside. Everybody's systems were failing. If you had thrown those little pink pills in the toilet and flushed, the entire second district would turn pink because of the water levels. So, you didn't have to hook up, but here's your alternative. If you don't hook up, if you choose not to, it's up to you, and your system's working. And there are people along 249 right now that are still using their same systems. They, they continue to use them. If it fails and you can't get a new perk, or you can't get a mound system perk, you're gonna wind up having, and, and the health department condemns your system, you're gonna have to wind up with something called pump and haul. And that requires, it's a 1,500-gallon tank, and you get to pump it out whenever you need to pump it out. And 1,500 gallons sounds like a lot until you have a family of a couple or three, and it's just not. My experience, and since I've been here, I don't ever require, I've never, ever heard that someone forced anybody to hook up to anything. They make it available. You know? And it's not Metcom's job to run pipes into the hinterlands. Land Use and Growth Management determines where development will go, and then it reaches out to Metcom and gives Metcoms, I'm gonna call them marching orders, for, for the infrastructure. And that's really how it, how it goes. But from my, from my perspective, if it weren't for Metcom and being given the opportunity to do one or the other, then I would be on pump and haul. There's just no way that our land would be able to sustain a, a, a system. But I, I don't, I've never heard of anything, you know, where Metcom expanded a system, for example. They'll make it available if it goes past your place, but they're not gonna make you hook up.
Okay.
Quick one. Is there one more question?
Mr. Ward, you're hurting me now. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next person. Just bear with me a second, because if I let everybody to get a second question tonight, we're gonna double it up. Yeah. Julianne Thorne? I'm sorry, dear. I thought I was doing it wrong.
No, you're fine.
Okay. Could you give us your name and address, please?
J U L E.
Hold it. There you go.
J U L E. Thorne. 30683 Big Horn Court.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, northern part of section of St. Mary's County is the gateway to the county. It's the welcome for everybody coming in from the north. And what do you see? Gas stations, fast food, traffic lights, congestion. Crowded roads that can't be expanded because the businesses that are there are built right up to the roadway. So, you can expand the roads, but yet people come to our county because they're leaving those northern counties because of all the congestion and traffic and crime. So, this Chick-fil-A that's coming, I don't see, I might be wrong. Is there a road around the building for first responders to get to the building? I don't seem to see that. I just see three lines of traffic going down to two. So, think about that. You need a road for your first responders to get to that building. That loop road, all that I see that's doing is going traffic off the main road to come to that building. But yet, now you're gonna have four ways for people to try to get into those fast food lanes. And all that's gonna do is cause anger, because society now is a whiffle. What's in it for me? They're gonna try to get to that lane. So, people aren't gonna be courteous. You think they are, but they're not. And the retail pad, I'm not quite sure why we in the northern section need another retail pad of these small stores. Because if I'm not mistaken, on the South By Lane, there's property over there that has a sign now for retail pads over there. So, I just feel that you guys are just trying to develop the northern section in an area that there isn't any room to do that. I understand it's zoned, and I understand developers need to make their money and, and have a living. But come on, give the northern section a break. We're just so congested, there's nowhere to expand these roads. Yes, they're dangerous. 55 through there? Really? Those who don't live up there, you need to come up there throughout the day, throughout the week, and see how congested those roads are. People don't obey the signs. Whether you have the lanes, the islands on that lane going south, I mean, going northbound, yeah, those are needed. Because you cross Route 6, don't go on that shoulder, because you don't know who's gonna come up behind you. So, again, in summary, think about this. I don't think that, that northern section, we can't stand much more. I understand it's zoned, but is it expandable? Is it sensible? Is it safe? Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Comment.
So, Jewel, don't, don't worry. So, I don't disagree with you. I would love to come south and, and see a great big sign that says, welcome to the town center of Charlotte Hall. A planned town center. But that's not what we have. We don't have that. We have a named town center, but we have no master plan for the town center. And that, that is on the backs of every planner and county commissioner since the 50s. We did a great job of naming all these places, but we didn't take the time of putting together master plans so we could share what we wanted. This county is completely reliant, completely reliant on developers. And, and, and a lot of people act as though developers have horns, and that's really just not, that's not the, that's not the case. We have a comprehensive plan that gives some general guidelines as to what people can or can't do, zoning can or can't do. And the fact of the matter is, a lot of people that own land within town centers and village centers, the landowners, don't want any part of it. They don't want any part of master planning, because it's their land. They want to do what they want to do with it. So, and, and maybe, maybe if you close your eyes, you may not like what Calvert looks like, but they have town centers. They all have a theme to their town centers. They all have rules, they have regulations. You can do this, you can do that, you can do other things. The building can look like this, certain fencing, you know, roadways and all the rest. We don't, we simply don't have that. And that's unfortunate. And it really puts it on onus on us, trying to do the very best we can, working with developers every, every single meeting. And it's not, when you say you guys, it's not us guys. It's, we're, we're the planning commission, that's true. And what we do is look at the comprehensive plan, those things that we're given, and try to make sure that what's coming before us is, is consistent with, with that comprehensive plan. We're getting ready to rewrite it. There's an opportunity for you, Jewel. We have a little extra time. There'll be times where you can come and make comments to that. Zoning will come after that, where you physically are gonna determine what happens within that, within, within those areas. What you might want to do is create a, get a bunch of people together and put a little pressure on our, on our powers-to-be to create master planning. We just haven't not, there's a lot of us that would like it. The pushback has been, it's expensive. It does cost money. And it has, there's a certain amount of buy-in from landowners. We were able to do it in Callaway, got it, went to the planning commission, it was approved. It went to the commissioners, not these commissioners. Some years back, it was turned down. The threat of a, a building moratorium caused that to stop. I have a copy of it. It was extremely well-written for what a village center might look like. And so, I don't disagree with you. I think it'd be wonderful if, if we could say to this developer, you're welcome. Come in, this is what we expect. This is what we want. But we don't, we don't have, we don't have an opportunity to do that, because we don't have anything in place. We don't have any guidelines specifically for them for a master plan. So, it's not that we, it's not that I wouldn't want to do it, I'm speaking for me. It's not that I wouldn't want that to happen, but the fact of the matter is, that's just not where we are now. And so, we rely on developers. We ask them to proffer certain things. We ask them to proffer de-acceleration lanes. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to go to a, to a developer and say, oh, and by the way, if you put that in, you know, I think if you put that in, I might want to vote for that, because that's called extortion. I can't do that. We can have discussions, we can make, have observations. The developer wants, wants to do, most developers want to do the right thing. They don't want a bad project. I mean, they, they want a project where people will come, feel safe. And I think it's important for people to understand exactly what the mitigation process is. What is, what is a developer's responsibility with regard to mitigation? And one of it's, it's gotta be safe. But in, in these cases, most of these intersections are, that are failing, that are below. that are below, 24 and 235 is a good example. That intersection built by the state was an E the day it opened. It remains an E. And at this point, all you can do if you're trying to develop anything is to mitigate your impact on that, on that intersection. That's what the requirement is. And if you can't do it there, you've got to find some other place to do it, or try to do it. So, up here, we can only do so much. It's frustrating for citizens to see these things come forward because it's not what they might want. And, you know, it may not be what I would want, but we have to deal with the cards that are dealt with.
And I understand that, and I respect that.
Yeah.
But in the northern county, again, when the county first started, and like you said, back when they did this master plan, they really didn't know what that concept meant and what was going to come in the future.
But there is no master plan.
But you've got this.
That's the problem.
But, okay, but what I'm trying to say is, look in the northern section. Look at that area from the county line to even 235. You're limited on how much you can put in that area.
Mm-hmm.
And the infrastructure is there to support it.
Well, then, you, what you need to do is come forward and help out with the rezoning. And so, when we do rezoning, and then someone decides that they don't want this particular property to be rezoned in a certain way, now, they don't own it. If you want to control a piece of property, you have a very good way of doing that. Buy it. And when I say that, people get very upset. But that's, that's the answer. If you don't, if you love that tree, and you've always loved that tree, and someone's standing there with a chainsaw, and they're going to cut it down, it's their tree. There's nothing I can do about that, or you can do about it, unless you buy the property.
Okay.
It may not be right, may be a moral dilemma, but it's just the long and the short of it. You know, sometimes this can be really ugly up this way, trying to do that.
I think we're getting past where we're supposed to be.
Okay, just one more thing. When you guys put up hearing signs, don't put them up on a 12-by-12 paper that runs parallel with the road, so I can't read it as I drive by because I don't want to pull off side the road because who knows might rear on me. But thank you guys for your time.
Don't put the signs up like that.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight? That's not, that's all the people I have on my sign-up sheet, except for Eugene Shotwell has a question mark. But is there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you give us your name and address?
My name's Mike Bagley. I live at 3743 D. Handle Drive, which is in the Melody Acres, right off Oaks Road at the county line. I am for this project. I've lived down there for 45 years, and for the most part, there has not been much down there. Yes, there's new development. I've never met this gentleman, but he seems like he's really open to make the changes that are necessary. The farmer's market right now is not a pretty sight as you come in the county. As you're coming at northern in the county, you don't have anything really nice. And I remember, oh, several, not several, a few years back, there was talk about Mechanics Elementary School. They wanted to redesign the front of it, so when people came down here to live or come down here for a vacation or whatever, you'd see a nice school, not a school that looked 50 years old. About seven or eight years ago, there was another meeting held at the library. I think Mr. Parlett, Mr. Fowler, somebody from the Burroughs family were talking about a back road from Golden Beach Road out to Route 6 with a couple of circles roundabouts, which I don't know, you'd have to buy some of the land. But as far as what I've seen up here, yeah, Triangle Drive's a problem, but if he's willing to put a circle in there behind that nursery where that other road comes past the back of the shopping center and comes out on Golden Beach, there does need to be some work at the intersection of Golden Beach and Triangle Drive where the Arby's is. You need to make a right turn so you can get the Golden Beach Road without waiting for somebody to make a left turn to go to Route 5. That needs to be fixed up. I agree there. And the little Triangle Drive from Mount Wolf out to Golden Beach needs to be fixed too, but that's not part of his problem. He's further south. And from what I've heard tonight, everything he has said, he seems to be open to making the changes. I love Aldi. My wife and I, we go to several different Aldis. The prices are so much better. That food line is just swamped now. McKay's is gone. Yes, we're going to get a shoppers, but we need three grocery stores. And as far as first responders getting in there, I'm with the fire department. I see no problems getting the Chick-fil-A, either with my department or Mechanics. So, we'll get there. If we have to jump curbs and it's in flames, we'll get there. But that's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Bagley? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Ward, I got a soft spot for you. You got one more question? Did you have one? One question. That's it. Just one. I'm almost breaking my rule, but you seem to have a concern.
Kennedy, I was going to ask you. A gentleman here brought up Triangle Drive. That's what I was thinking about. You go to the other end, that's where I live. It's almost nightly. I lay in my bed, and I hear cars hit out there. You see it often on all day long around there, right where the Wawa, the food line, and the Walgreens come together. That's as bad as Route 5. Well, any of that, and I heard someone speak about, "Well, we'll use Triangle Drive to get some of the traffic off 5." All that's going to do is back us up. You know, so just please take that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is anybody else? I'm going to go ahead and close public testimony. Ms. Greer. Do you want to go ahead and give your part? Now, as I said, the 10 o'clock hour is getting close. We can, we've got two options. You can go ahead and do your thing within the board deliberation. If we run into a time factor, and there's things that we want to have answered and things like that, we're going to have to continue it then. So, it's, it's...
We're going to move as quickly as we can with the hope that you can deliberate, and hopefully, we've answered all your questions.
Okay.
So, we'll just move as quickly as we can. Mr. Orocho, could you just very briefly answer the question regarding the water and sewer facilities serving the project?
Ms. Wells correctly said the water is available through Metcom in this area and goes, continues up north on Route 5. The sewer is a private system that's owned by the developer, which has the capacity for the proposed work. We provided the Health Department and Metcom with a chart showing the usage and what the demand is, and it meets what the plant is rated at through MDE. It's all approved, and so, it's satisfactory.
So, with that, I would just really like to briefly touch upon the findings. The one thing we haven't touched upon specifically, although it's been referenced, and I appreciate the comments and the understanding of this Planning Commission, is consistency with the comp plan. As I indicated to you when I first sat down, this is exactly what your comprehensive plan calls for. The property is located in the Charlotte Hall Town Center, which is zone TMX, and your comprehensive plan says that the county would like to see growth happen here, and this type of growth. The other thing that your comp plan says, as I stated in the beginning in Chapters 3 and Chapters 4, is that it really wants to see, your comprehensive plan really wants to see the redevelopment of these types of parcels as opposed to extending onto undeveloped parcels. And when you look at the plan that this project is giving you, just a couple of points that I want to hit. You're going from zero stormwater management to meeting current stormwater management regulations, which was, we know, the state of Maryland has some of the most stringent stormwater regulations in the country. And that's important because people often forget that that's one of the benefits of redevelopment, is that you have the application of those stringent regulations. Your comprehensive plan talks about buffers and going green. Take a look at that plan, and I want you to recall the picture of the front of where the farmer's market exists today. And if you look at the picture, you can see that this advances the goals of your comprehensive plan. You now have a better vista, completely consistent. You have a 65-foot buffer, which is completely consistent to improving your vista and streetscape associated with your town center. With respect to traffic, and I'm rushing because we have comprehensive plan, but we also have, well, let me just circle back, pedestrian circulation and pedestrian-friendly. You heard about the internal sidewalks and connectivity of these parcels that is consistent with that. With respect to adequate public facilities, the record is replete, and you have all of the review comments from the various agencies showing the, showing that there is adequate public facilities. But the big conversation tonight has been roads. You have the testimony of Jackie Chandler before you, whose testimony is not challenged. And Ms. Chandler clearly indicated that with the proposed mitigation, this project may meet adequate public facilities. And in fact, we are overmitigating. And the question I asked her is, with this project, is the road system, it's not perfect, trust me. It's not perfect, right? We would like it to be perfect. But the question is, has, have we improved the situation? Is it better with this project or without? And without anything, before Mr. Rosemore spoke, Ms. Chandler's testimony is, again, unchallenged, that the situation improved, that it was better with this project. Not perfect, not like the we want it to be, but it did improve the situation. But Mr. Rosemore, when this, when the commission questioned him, showed exactly what he had committed to before, and that's his investment in the community. I will commit, if you would like to commit me to commit to a D cell lane subject to the approval of state highway and the ability to do that, I will do that. I will commit to exploring a traffic improvement internally, again, subject to the limitations of my leases, the right-of-way, and the ability to design that. So, he's gone a step further. Understandably, we would all like it to be perfect, but that, that's not, that's not, as you know, as each project and redevelopment comes through, you get those things. You don't get them all at once. With respect to promoting the health, safety, and welfare, again, you heard the testimony from the citizens, the desire for another grocery store, the desire for a Chick-fil-A, which, again, is a community amenity going into item number five. And then, again, with respect to your Chapter 62 design standards, the record is replete that it is consistent and that there have been no issues during the process and that the size, design, and scale is consistent with the surrounding community. So, I've spoken very brief, very quickly, and hopefully, have made my points. I mean, this is, this is, this is what, this is what your plan calls for. It's a good project. You have a good developer at the table. And we would seek your approval of the concept plan, again, understanding that we have till, that there, that this is the approval of a concept plan so that we can proceed to the next step. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Mr. Van Kirk.
I appreciate all that. I really, um... To me, without having some questions answered, and I know Mr. Rosemore would do all he could to do them. I mean, we've worked with him on other projects. Now, I understand that it's nothing that he wouldn't do that he said he would do, but, I mean, just one point of the D cell lane, could that be a deciding factor for some people? You know, if you get it or if you don't. To me, it's, it's an important part of the project. And like I say, I'm just speaking for myself. There's a, you know, I think you're going to have a lot of traffic that ends up on Travel Lane and goes up Henry to Triangle, whether the people want it or not. I just think it's going to be a lot easier than going back out onto, onto 5 in a lot of cases, especially people that live there and know where all them roads are to and from. So, I think a traffic device there is really needed. You know, I think all them roads back there work internally. You know, you've got Triangle on both ends, towards end and the other end. That's, it all connects, and, you know, people are going to be going all different ways. I don't think the people up there have done proper justice when the tractor supply was built. And I've brought this up numerous times. Supposed to have had a traffic roundabout there. It's never been put in. I still don't know why. We heard from a couple directors, not Mr. Gotch, that it was going to be done this spring. Well, that was three springs ago. I don't know why it's not there. You know, it was supposed to have been part of the approval of, of the tractor supply. And that would help a great deal of not just the traffic that's going out to 235, but, you know, slows down traffic on Triangle and that whole area. You know, there's a terrible hill there that if you go from Triangle across Mount Wolf, or I think it's Mount Wolf, whatever the road is, to get over to the Wawa, you know, it's a terrible bump and slope. And, I mean, I was there a couple weeks ago, and somebody's front end, I could hear it, bottomed out, you know, coming down from the Wawa, coming across the Triangle. It's, it just seems like that some of them roads could be improved a little better than what they are, that, that should have been done. I think there should be something at Travelled and Henry, and I think there should be a D cell lane. So, and I understand the developer's willing to do what he can do. But in my opinion, I would prefer to have some answers with that. So, that's just, all I'm going to say about that is just my personal opinion.
I agree with you on that. I know it was stated that it's going to approve the sites, site line on 230, on 5 there. When this comes, there'll be a buffer and such. But I used to like looking at the farmer's market and seeing what kind of fruit they had out on the stand on the road. And I think a lot of people up there, I don't live up there. I live close. I live in Hollywood. But I know, my family would go up there at times and buy fruit and stuff. And I think even with the county having their own farmer's market down off of Thompson Corner Road, people are still going to go to those two vendors that do it. They've been there for years. I mean, they've been there a long time. I know, I call them the mum man who's there. I mean, you go up there on a Saturday and try to buy a mum from that place, and it's, you know, it's busy. So, there's going to be a lot of activity going on, not just out here on the road itself, but in the back. And I would like to have those questions answered by the developer. You know, I'm leaning toward, you know, this is looking good, but I need to know, in the back, is this going to be able to move? How are we going to move these people? They're still going to go to that farmer's market. They're going to go back there. Even if they can't see it from, from Route 5, they're going to go. People have been going to it for years. It's just like something you do. It's like going to the store on the weekend. Well, we're going to stop by the market. Those are my concerns. Mr. Evans?
Yeah. When we're given our packet, we were the beneficiary of a memorandum that was requested of Mr. Hauser. And I don't want to put you on the spot, John, but I'm going to put you on the spot. So, and the memorandum has to do with APF.
Four hours, Mr. Evans, and you call me up here at 9:59.
I would have called you, but you looking so comfortable.
You all had to hear from your lawyer at some point tonight.
Well, you know, that's okay. And so, but we were talking about mitigation and those kinds of things, John.
Yes, sir.
And you wrote this very articulate paper with regard to mitigation. And I think it's, I think it would be helpful for the folks here to benefit from what you wrote with regard to mitigation.
So, what we had, Mr. Evans, is that we did have a request, and it was noted. And it's been no surprise to anybody who knew this was in the radar, particularly with this Planning Commission's historic, very great sensitivity towards traffic, that traffic was going to be of concern with this proposal. So, what the county attorney's office did was generate this three-page memo just summarizing what our standards are for adequate public facilities. Adequate public facilities being our catch-all terms for water, sewage, schools, but in this case, roads and traffic. And these will, these will relate to the collectors. These will relate to the public roads. This won't relate to the internal circulation, the queuing at the won't relate to the internal circulation, the queuing at the Chick-fil-A itself. But what the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance essentially lays out, the standards that have to be met on adequate public facilities, as Ms. Chandler noted, ideally, all other things being equal, you would be looking for a Level of Service C, this being a town center in a commercial project. That would be the mark that is the minimum standard. But as Ms. Chandler correctly noted, the town center is a designated growth area, it is an area we want to encourage development in. So because of that, the consideration the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance gives to situations like that, 70.7.2.E., I think, says that where we have town centers and development districts, other revitalization areas where we want to drive growth, are the words from the CZO, is that you are allowed to achieve less than the minimum level of service. We can do less than that Level of Service C if, on balance, the project will still leave development, leave the traffic situation better than it was without the development. So if you take into account the trips that the new development will generate, the conditions it will create, if the commissioners are convinced, if they think there's sufficient facts and evidence that the project will be ever so slightly better than it is right now, when all's said and done, with the mitigation that's being offered, then the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance says, in those cases, adequate public facilities, the standards for roads have been met, if it's just left ever so slightly better in these kinds of districts only. And then there was also a notation given on their footnote about half dozen other projects where the same standard has been applied, a majority of them in Charlotte Hall as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree, I mean, I agree with everything you just said, but how do we, what happens if they can't leave it better than it was?
So the requirement is, again, the language in 70.7.2.E. states that it has to be an improvement. At the end of the day, the project, and I, Ms. Greer, I know, probably has read it inside and out as well, if there's any exception to what I have to say, I welcome it, but the way I read that ordinance of the code, which I quote in here, I believe, is that it has to be an improvement. If they can't create an improvement, slight improvement, but it still has to be an improvement, then as I read it, that standard, even that lax standard, is not met. That's the factual determination the planning commission has to make, that whether or not the offered improvements here, the mitigation that's been talked about, will in fact result in a net benefit at the end of the day. That's the decision you all have.
That tonight, that's the problem. Right now, we've been presented many risks, and we have talked about the mitigation of those risks. The developer has agreed that he will attempt, to the best of his ability, to correct as much as he can. But suppose he can't? After we approved it with all this, but he has to A, B, C, D, if A and C don't happen, can he just continue? I mean, what happens? Does it come back here? And I don't know what the process is.
So I think if I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Robrecht, it sounds like, at least in your estimation, speaking for yourself, that if the developer could do the improvements, not the three mitigation proposals that Ms. Chandler elaborated on, that I think SHA has approved or are guaranteed, but those, plus the specific improvements the developer talked about tonight, the deceleration lane and the roundabout or other mitigations further down, not Henry Lane, but our Travel Lane.
Right.
It's those last two that we're not certain about, which the developers promised to check on. Those are what would tip it for. That's what you think you would need to find?
Yes.
So then, I think my suggestion to you, if you put the question to me bluntly, is that a conditional approval based upon those mitigation being met or being able to be performed, but with the language that the State Highway Administration, that it wouldn't have to be required if the State Highway Administration disallows it or disapproves of it, that I don't think would be sufficient in your estimation, then, what you've just given me, to conclude that there would absolutely be a benefit, there'd just be an uncertainty. And at that point, I would agree that in your one case, the scenario you just gave me, there's not sufficient information before you right now. That would be something we'd have to wait to hear back on.
Right.
So maybe be the better, I'll say, direction this evening, continue it, let them get the information back to us. I know that any developer doesn't want to hear that word, "continue." It's almost like the, well, I can't even say it, but it's a bad, very bad word. But if we were to continue it, to get that information from them, I know this board member would be able to make a much more informed decision.
I think, Mr. Thompson, I know this board likes to make comments from time to time, and some of you have been doing this longer than I've been alive, but I think it would be customary.
Don't be like that now.
I think it would be customary, even at this late hour, to confer with the board, with the applicant on that one, see their preferences, if they consent to a continuance first.
Well, I think I'd rather confer with the board first, see if they want to continue it, and then we'll, I know this gentleman is more than willing to work with, he's shown tonight, I mean, just in my observation, that he's ready to do what he's got to do, but we also have to do what we got to do in order to protect these citizens that are sitting out here.
Just want to make clear, so those things that we talk about on the development side, those things that you're not talking about tonight with regard to mitigation, those things that happen on this site, he could take this back, and then he could come back and proffer those, but we don't have the ability to require those on that site. What we have to wait for is to wait for the state to agree that a deceleration lane would be appropriate, and whatever else we talked about on the state line, on the state side. But our hope would be that, after having all this discussion, that to the degree that is humanly possible, he would proffer these things that we're talking about tonight. But Planning Commission doesn't have the ability to require those on that development site, does it?
You can't. If the planning commission were to pass a condition and say, "Thou shalt not unless A and B," A being the deceleration, B being a correct, that is not binding upon the State Highway Administration. They get to say what we want. Now, a condition phrased that way, if they can't then meet those conditions because State Highway Administration says no, then the approval fails. That would put us, though practically speak, in a situation where you'd be passing conditions tonight, we don't know whether they can be met or not. The applicant could be put in an awkward position where he would have to note an appeal to the Board of Appeals just to preserve that right, waiting for the State Highway Administration to get back to him.
So I agree with the folks that spoke before. I mean, I think that while developers don't want to hear continuance, and I understand that, what they don't want to hear is that it's been denied either. So I would rather, in my view, we continue it to a date certain and give them an opportunity to come back and, you know, and hopefully, although I hold a little hope with the State Highway, perhaps we could get them.
Mr. Gotch?
You thought you were going to get away from me tonight. Not only am I going to call you up here, I'm going to make you swear before you give me any information.
Just remind him it's after 10.
Thank you, John.
Made me break my promise, so, of 10 o'clock, so. Do you declare and firm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir, it's good to see you this evening. You heard kind of what's going on. If this gentleman goes to the state and tries to get some information, I'm not holding you to this, but in your realm of what you've done before you got here, how long you think it's going to take for him to get some information in? Because I have dates, continuance dates, and I'd like to assign one to him as soon as possible. So I'm just going to shoot you, I'm just going to shoot you out some vague dates. I mean, can he get it done in March? I'm not holding you to it, I'm just asking you for an opinion.
No. But if you assign a date, all they're asking for is a yes or no, would this be acceptable? So that might be faster than submitting something like a design request, asking State Highway to start looking at, how big of a study do we need to do? They've already looked at a study, now the question is, can we add a deceleration lane at Travel Lane? Or not Travel Lane, but whatever the Loop Road is.
Okay. I know it wouldn't, are you getting ready to say something to me, Mr. Hauser? Come on up.
Uh-oh, two attorneys.
Oh, my.
All I would have, Mr. Thompson, is of course, I tried to be efficient with my time, the moment Mr. Gotch got to speak, I scampered on back to ask Ms. Greer. Apparently, Ms. Greer has spoken about this possibility, when we could expect a response from SHA on the deceleration lane and the others, according to Ms. Greer.
According to Ms. Chandler, it's really, she can have a conversation with State Highway, and then it's really measuring the right-of-way and looking at it to see if there's sufficient room with the right-of-way, correct, Ms. Chandler? We think, honestly, we could turn that around within a week. We would prefer to be on your next available agenda if possible.
The first date I can give you is March 6th. That's not that far away.
That's not the only question, though. We would have three or four things that we would like checked out. I mean, just, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, but that was.
We would give them all.
Time to do that.
That's a long pole in the tent, right? Yeah, we would, there would be three or four things that I think we would probably propose that we would like checked out and answered, not just from State Highway.
Before we take that date, what are the other things, then, that we need, that we need answered, that we think we need answered?
And are there things that require the state to China?
Well, no, that's the only thing, I guess, the state, because I would say that proposed traffic measure, whether it's a roundabout or whatever, at Travel Lane in Henry, I'm assuming at the far end of Travel, is probably all internal from Mr. Rosemore and checking with where his right-of-ways and property are.
Tell us what he can do with that.
The decelerating lane, we talked about the crosswalk from Aldi's over to the Chick-fil-A, it goes right into the pickup lane at, you know, where the cars are picking up food, doesn't seem to be a probable spot for that, and since you've got three ways of traffic internally merging into the start of the order lanes, somebody brought up here, should there be a stop sign at the, you know, so you don't have cars just barrel down that way off of Travel into the parking lot, and you could have cars coming off of Loop or the other way into the Chick-fil-A, you know, from the Aldi side, all trying to get into there at once, at least one of them would.
You're looking for the internal circulation plan for Chick-fil-A.
An internal circulation.
You need to look at it much, much better than.
You know, I think, I actually think, not that I knew exactly where Mr. Antash was talking about inside there, but what I heard about possibly, I think having the other entrance up where the entrance is into the Aldi, opposite of that, coming in and going up and around and kind of coming in, gives them even more storage. I think that's what he was saying, almost would make sense if we had just some sort of internal working, or could that possibly alter a little from the Chick-fil-A side? I mean, I don't think the stop sign, if it was left like this, would be a problem. I wouldn't assume somebody would have a problem putting a stop sign up within their, and it's not a safety thing on the roads, it's just an internal. And I think that was all that I basically had, I don't know if anybody else had any additional.
If we're reaching out to Chick-fil-A, it'd be just interesting to see how deliveries are made and where they're made, because it's not located on that.
Yeah, there's no area for parking like a big truck like the Aldi's has back there.
And the drive-throughs have like those lower things, you know.
Most other Chick-fil-A's that I've seen, because I come down 235 early in the morning, real early in the morning, they're doing it then.
Okay. Long before they're open.
Yeah. I mean, that's the only way they can.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And since we had Mr. Gotch there, you're going to be the third director I've asked this of, could you check on that Triangle Lane, Mount Wolf Roundabout? I drove by there the other day, last Thursday. What the status of that is? Yeah, there's one power pole that's in the way, and they were running new lines just the other day, so there was not left, much left on that one pole. So the old poles are being replaced by much taller poles, and once the pole gets out of the way, once MECO gets all the power off the pole, it's going in. Okay, so all the property acquisition is done there? Okay.
There's hope, Jim.
Thank you.
Joe, you got it.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to name that after you, Jim. We're going, I'm going to talk to folks. Okay. You heard all of what we're going to be looking for. We have a March 6th and a March 20th.
March 6th? I knew that without even turning around.
Okay, you're ambitious, but, I mean, if we don't get exactly what we need that night, it might have to have another continuation date, and hopefully, just hopefully on for y'all's part, I mean, we have a list of continuation dates for cases. Now, I don't know about this next one, but if they were to say, "We need to continue it," and they see March 20th on there and take it, then you go from March 6th, and then I say, "Well, I can't have you back until April 17th." I'm just giving you a heads up, okay?
Does the meeting have to be opened back up to public testimony if they offer new information next time also?
That is both customary and required upon receipt of new information.
Just let the public know who's here.
Is there enough time, March 6th, from today, to do the two public notices?
We do not have to do the two public notices when we set the date and time for the continuance.
Okay, okay.
So what I need, before you all get all packed up, is a motion to continue it to that date, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, for a continuance till March 6th.
And I'll second it.
I got a second by Mr. Brown. I don't think I'm going to have to do roll call on this. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I just want to thank the commission and also thank your staff, as well as Mr. Hauser.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all very much. Is there any other business?
Who's to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.